Okay, welcome everyone to the this virtual regular meeting at seven o'clock of the Livermore City Council. You can watch it on Zoom tube, on Zoom YouTube, this is Zoom webinar. And we're just coming back from a closed session. So this regular meeting, I would like to call it to order. And can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bonano.
Here.
Councilmember Carley.
Here.
Councilmember Kake. Here. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. All right. And next up is do the pledge allegiance. You can follow along with me, but probably on mute. Otherwise, it's a little chaotic. So then we have the visual. I don't see that yet. There we go. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at this point, I'll ask the city attorney if there's any reportable action taken in closed session.
Your honor, Mayor, this is Jason Don Call your city attorney. No, the city councils did not take a reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And now we're on to agenda item two, which is a set of proclamations, which I'll read the highlights of in a moment. The first one is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And Alameda County Deputy District Attorney Cheryl Poncini and Lead Regional Supervisor for Ombudsman Services of Contra Costa, Solano, and Alameda. Chairman Charmaine Brent will be present to accept this proclamation and all after I read it. I'll ask if they have any say anything. So I have the proclamation that's if you can see it with glare, but I have it. And we'll be distributing that after the meeting. So proclaiming Elder Abuse Awareness Month, June 2021. Whereas victims of elder abuse include include both men and women of diverse backgrounds, who have been victimized by strangers or by persons they know. And whereas the increased isolation experienced by many due to the pandemic has made the reporting of suspected elder abuse and neglect more difficult, and increased opportunities to morph existing scams and create new scams. The Alameda County District Attorney's Office and its Elder Protection Unit and its Victim Witness Division provide a network of services to elders in danger of becoming or who have become victims of abuse and neglect. And whereas the Livermore Senior Services Center also provides a comprehensive array of services as well as social and recreational programs to meet the needs of the elder population, enhancing their quality of life and helping them to remain active, healthy, safe, and independent. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims June 21 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in recognition of elders being valuable members of our city and having the right to live safely and securely in our community. Would those present to accept the proclamation like to say anything?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Cheryl Poncini, and I am a deputy district attorney here in Alameda County, assigned to the Elder Protection Unit. And on behalf of DA Nancy O'Malley and the entire unit, I would like to thank you, Mayor, and the City Council, the city staff, and the residents of Livermore for once again recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and issuing the proclamation. Despite California's officially reopening tomorrow because of COVID-19, this continues to be a very stressful time in our community, state, country, and the world due to COVID-19's global pandemic impacting health and financial issues. Elder abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation also continue to be an ongoing global health and financial issue for our seniors in our community. Particularly in times such as this, keeping our residents aware of this issue through, for example, issuing proclamations such as the one you are issuing tonight is vital. The reality is that abuse of any kind simply does not stop by itself. It may take a village to raise a child, as Hillary Clinton has reminded us, but it does take an entire community working together to help end abuse of all kinds. The very place where seniors should be safe may not be a very safe place. The key to keeping seniors safer and having a safer community is awareness and reporting. So be aware of the red flags of abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation. Report concerns to law enforcement, adult protective services, or if the senior is in skilled licensed facility to the ombudsman program so that trained investigators can determine the best path to correct the situation. After all, the most important goal is keeping our seniors safe. So thank you once again for recognizing the importance of this issue. Now, just before you turn to this proclamation, Mayor, I received an email from Charmaine Brent. She was having difficulty getting on to Zoom. So I don't know if she's been able to to get on to Zoom. Charmaine, are you there?
I'm here now.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm trying to find my
So Charmaine, would you like to say something?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. There's some kind of issue with my video. I'm not sure why it's not showing up. But I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you guys so much for having us and acknowledging this proclamation. And I am the lead regional supervisor in Alameda County. And Alameda County is the home of over 15,000 residents who are either elders or dependent adults living in long-term care settings or boarding care. Our ombudsman advocate for the rights of residents and investigate complaints in long-term care facilities such as abuse, quality of care, and residents' rights. The pandemic significantly impacted residents in skilled nursing facilities and boarding care facilities reported record number of COVID cases. And we met those challenges by providing information and assistance to residents, families, and facilities. And we continually assess quality of care and quality of life. And at this present time, we're really trying to help facilities get back to some level of normalcy, whether that's visitation, making sure they understand the guidelines that are being passed down from the Department of Public Health and CDC, and making sure that residents are not just in the dark, but aware of these guidelines and participating in what that really means. I know that at the beginning of the pandemic, they all felt like they were in in the dark. So one of the things we make sure that they have some kind of session or they're talking to residents. And if not, myself and my ombudsman go out and we are educating residents on what is actually happening. So again, I just want to say, you know, thank you guys so much for having us on the panel and acknowledging the proclamation and 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 just being and just thankful that I'm able to do the work that I'm doing for this population.
Okay, well, well, thank you both. It's very important work and really appreciate what you do and really value, you know, all that you've told us tonight, just how important this is and all of the steps that we can take to keep our elders safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next that was next up is item, agenda item 2.2. And the executive director of Livermore Pride, Amy Rose, will be present to accept the proclamation declaring June 2021 as Pride Month. So I have another proclamation here. I don't think I got the glare on it as much this time. And we'll be getting that out shortly. But let me read a few highlights. Whereas the city of Livermore has been and continues to be home to people of different national origins, immigration or refugee status, cultures, histories, races, ethnicities, religious affiliations, or none. Gender identity, sexual orientation, ages, education, economic status, and physical, mental, or emotional abilities. Our strength and vision is derived from our diversity and its inclusiveness. And whereas the city of Livermore, whereas the Livermore City Council believes that this city can best stand against bigotry, intolerance, and hate through leading by example and living our shared community values of welcome, inclusion, tolerance, and respect. Whereas Pride Month is recognized each year to acknowledge the impact that the LGBTQ plus individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. And whereas the raising of the Philadelphia Pride Flag at Livermore City Hall in honor and support of Pride Month recognizes the importance for all residents to continue to learn and grow with each other. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore hereby proclaims June 2021 to be Pride Month. And thanks, Livermore Pride, for their efforts in encouraging members of our community to come together to celebrate our strength and diversity. So thank you. And Amy, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Warner. Since our creation in 2019, Livermore Pride has been a community-led, community-supported endeavor. In 2021, we are proud to announce that we are officially a 501(c)(3) nonprofit through the ongoing participation of Livermore and the greater Tri-Valley region. When we first created the first Livermore Pride event in October 2019, our focus was to help build community and end the isolation of our LGBTQ plus residents. That launch event was a success of over 3,000 community members coming together for the first time proudly, joyfully, and as families and people from all walks of life. Since then, the city of Livermore has continued to support our goals of community building and ending isolation, both through its ongoing equity and inclusion work and through actions such as raising the pride flag above City Hall now for the third year in a row. We are incredibly honored and grateful to this city council and leadership and look forward to both our next Livermore Pride Festival in October as well as our ongoing broadening and deepening of our work in this community. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And we'll be getting the proclamation to you in the hard copy soon. So thank you. Now, up next is an item that we've added to the agenda. And I'll be presenting a proclamation celebrating Juneteenth in the city of Livermore. So recognizing June 19, 2021. So whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought as captives to what is now the Commonwealth of Virginia in 1619, and were bought and sold as slave labor for at least 245 years, suffering unspeakable acts of violence. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January 1, 1863, freeing the enslaved people in the Confederate states. On June 19, 1865, US soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas with the orders to enforce the Presidential Proclamation. Black Texans used this moment to claim the freedom for which they had long fought. And this day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution abolishes slavery and involuntary servitude, and whereas other systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, human bondage and trafficking, and mass incarceration, and the police violence against African Americans continued throughout our country's history, which has led to the present-day disparities in education, in job attainment, housing, and healthcare, as well as disproportionate incarceration rates for African Americans in cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the abolishment of slavery, symbolizes freedom and reminds all Americans of the significant contributions of African Americans to our society. Now, therefore, the City Council, the City of Livermore recognizes June 19, 2021 as Juneteenth to honor African American history, recognize the end of slavery, and celebrate the culture and achievements of African Americans in Livermore and throughout the country. So thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I make a quick announcement?
Sure.
We have listed the link on YouTube as well as reposted it on the city website. We did have some people that were able to get in, but others were not. So all of those links have been updated. If you're still having trouble, please email city clerk@cityoflivermore.net. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So you think we're all good here with participation at this point?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So up up next is the presentation of the 2021 High School Senior Arts Awards. And the city clerk will be putting up pictures of the winners while I present. So I've got to make sure when that happens, I can still make sure I've got access to my notes. So can you the the High School Senior Arts Awards were designed to identify, recognize, and encourage a Livermore's talented high school graduating students for their accomplishments in the arts at their high school. This year, the Commission for the Arts issued 10 awards, five for Granada High, four for Livermore High, and one for the Valley View Charter Prep. Tonight, in lieu of our traditional in-person awards, okay, I've got to go find this again. I am pleased to announce that the city will mail each graduate an award certificate and a $600 award check for their outstanding contribution to the arts. Before I name the recipients, I want to acknowledge the commissioners Elizabeth McWhorter, Committee Chair for the High School Senior Arts Award, Bob Gausman, Chair of the Commission for the Arts and Committee Member, and Sher Woolley, Committee Member. So now I will announce the recipients. At Granada High, it was Jay Fanaro for Visual Arts, Naomi Lynn for Media, Rosalyn Leitig for Visual Arts, Kami Terreura of Performing Arts, and Natasha Wiesner for Visual Arts. At Livermore High, it's Leah Novo for Performing Arts, Brianna Calderon for Visual Arts, Kate Coldsberry for Literary Arts, and Athena McPeak for Performing Arts. And at Valley View Charter Prep, it was Jake Siders for Performing Arts. So thank you. Great job all and enjoy your rewards. Okay. So now we're up next is item 2.4, which is the Community Asset Management Program Camp Outreach Committee Annual Update. So if we could have the staff report update, that would be wonderful.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. This is Chair Donna Allen. Hope everybody can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening to you and City Council. My name is Donna Allen, and I am the Chair of the Community Asset Management Program Outreach Committee, also known as CAM. As you may recall, the CAM Committee was originally established in 2016 and focused on infrastructure data analysis. In January of 2020, you adjusted our missions and duties to focus on public outreach. On behalf of my eight committee members and I, we are grateful for the opportunity to update you and our community on the wonderful work done since the last reporting. First, we would like to extend our gratitude to you, Mayor, and City Council for your continued trust and support by extending our committee time, thus gifting us with the appropriate time and resources necessary to carry on our mission and better serve Livermore in such an important area. Our committee understands Livermore is leading the way in asset management as very few cities nationwide are focusing in this area. So it's truly a privilege and honor for us to serve as advocates and hopefully with our newest objectives as educators as well. During such a difficult time, our committee has been working diligently and remotely on the public outreach campaign, which will continue over the upcoming year. This campaign is utilizing a variety of tools to increase the community's awareness and perception about the city's infrastructure and gather public feedback. This public feedback will be used to craft new city policies, to prioritize rehabilitation projects, and develop updated practices related to asset management. Our committee members have helped develop an outreach and communication strategy, brand identity, and community survey, which reached over 1,100 respondents. We've been providing detailed and relevant information on our project website and produce interactive web-based quizzes, newsletter articles, social media posts, and an educational video as well. We created an all-ages asset geocache and over 600 participants of all ages venture around the city hunting for hidden clues and learning about community-owned assets like pipes, traffic signals, and roads. For example, my family and I participated in this interactive virtual game, as I'm new to the city of Livermore, having lived here now for a little over three years. And I got to learn that one of our city buildings was actually the former first library here, something that I did not know, and it was very thrilling to learn as well. Feedback from this event or from this activity was extremely positive. Participants stated that they learned a lot about city infrastructure, as I mentioned, explored parts of the city that they had never, they never knew existed or had visited before, and appreciated that in a COVID-safe or in a COVID era, there was a safe and fun and outdoor activity for them to do. The geocache is still up and running for anyone that wants to have some fun. Just visit our website at www.livermoreassets.net and we'll be happy to provide this information for public dissemination as well. And while you're on the website, I would like to express to our community that you can also watch other animated videos I mentioned previously. Lastly, something that we're really thrilled and that really aligns with the mission that you guys detailed last year, we're very excited to announce a very unique collaboration between our CAM Outreach Committee and the Climate Action Plan Committee as well. We are looking to partner with them, and we will have our first inaugural meeting next Wednesday, June 23, at 7:30 PM, to focus on the interconnectness of infrastructure and climate change. And we have a keynote speaker from the Arizona State University who will set the stage and help us with this discussion. This virtual event is open to everyone, and agenda and logging information will be available by Friday, June 18. Also, we are commencing a series of communication community outreach events, meaning that we are looking to partner with local cities and potentially other cities as well. Again, in educating them about the work that we're doing, about supporting the asset management efforts set forth by Agenda, by our mission, and by the work that we're doing. And if I may be allowed to, just for a few more minutes, I would like to say that all of this hard work, all of these wonderful resources that you have provided to my committee members and I would not have been able, been impossible to accomplish without the stellar strategic planning and execution from your asset management team led by program manager Debbie Bell and executed by Kathy Hughes as well, along with a consultation team that has been supporting us through our branding and now upcoming our community outreach efforts. And also, lastly, but definitely not least, my CAM Committee members would like, and I would like to briefly take the opportunity to congratulate Councilmember Gina Bonano for her promotion, not only to a seat on the City Council, but specifically extend our sincere gratitude for the many years that she participated in CAM. Her leadership, her expertise, and her robust commitment are still wonderfully appreciated and felt. And again, we are just grateful for her. We're grateful for you, Mayor. We're grateful for the City Council, for the resources, for the trust that you have deposited in myself and my council members as well. So thank you for your time and continuous support.
Well, thank you for all you're doing. I've got a question for you. Just want to make, it is a wonderful update. And I really also want to just note your enthusiasm. And so I get the impression that you and your fellow committee members are really enjoying this opportunity.
Very much so. We are a very small but mighty group of council members with a diverse set of backgrounds and skill sets and also sort of, you know, residents here in Livermore. We have many of our committee members who have lived here for, if I recall, 25-plus years. And there's some newbies like myself who have lived here for, I'd say, like a little over three years. And we, I think the common denominator in our great diversity and commitment is the way that we love this city, the way that we hope to see it continue to grow and be what's wonderful, and also hopefully develop and morph into something even better and more. And as I've mentioned, I think we were all really captured by the uniqueness of what the city is doing. Asset management is relatively new for many cities nationwide. And for us, as I said, it's truly a privilege to serve in the ways that we can opine, in the ways that we can sort of educate others in this wonderful and vital area for city survivorship, among other things.
You know, when, well, thank you. And, you know, I initiated this, you know, half a dozen years ago now. And at the time I did that, I would not have imagined this kind of enthusiasm because this is a really hard work. And so it really is. And so I figured we need a bunch of real wonks and trying to get through this. But you're making it really sound very wonderful, actually. And the fact that it's bringing the community together and having people see aspects that they might not other have seen, I mean, that's a real side benefit. I mean, we have to do the hard work of deciding how we're going to allocate our resources. But this I never would have imagined was a byproduct. So I'm really, really happy to hear this. And Gina, you were on the committee. You want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor.
No, I just appreciate the report very much. I couldn't agree more with everything Donna said regarding the committee. The committee is just very enthusiastic, very knowledgeable, comes from a variety of different backgrounds and bring just a really diverse and knowledgeable perspective to this topic. And not only is it just the outreach, but technically, they bring a lot to it and also want to just commend Debbie Bell, who's just really, really made this program blossom as well as make the consultant team on it. I think it's really, as you said, Mayor Warner, it's just been, you know, an effort that's sort of grown somewhat organically into something that people really appreciate. The community's gotten into it. And that's, that was one of the major thrusts was educate the community and get them involved and feel, make them feel like they're invested in the outcome. So bravo to everyone and very nice job, Donna. Really certainly ran over to the right person.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Any other questions? Or, you know, we're grateful for your comments, by the way. Thank you so much.
Okay, I saw Vice Mayor Monroe, you flash your hand. Do you want to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to do, I find this, the work that has been done on this just so inspiring. I've said it before, and I thought, do I really need to say it again? But sure. I'm always happy to support the work of this. This is unusual work. It was one of the things that inspired me and keyed into the city. It continues to inspire me and watching it move into the communications phase has been a delight. So, you know, just rah rah, yay team. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. And we definitely look forward to continuing to reporting you on, like I said, as we transition into the community or the outreach part. I know that with your support, we are being very much prepared for what's coming ahead and for the partnerships that we're looking to build as well.
Okay.
Totally there.
So thank you. I see. So thank you. I, I see clerk mentioned that some people might have their hand up. We in agenda item two, we don't generally take public comment unless we're making a decision of appointing people to something. So I see clerk, is there any further comment I need to make on that?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, before I open citizens forum, I've got a couple of more items. First, I'd like to have Councilmember Carling tell us more about the good news of us winning the All America Cities Award. So, Councilwoman Carling.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I thought I'd take a few minutes just to formally acknowledge that the city of Livermore was named a twenty twenty-one All American City at the National Civic League's All American City Awards Ceremony last week on June ninth, twenty twenty-one. The theme this year was building equitable and resilient communities. Livermore put together a delegation that competed against nineteen other finalist cities from across the country with a ten-minute live virtual presentation, followed by a ten-minute Q and A session centered on the city's community-driven projects addressing youth mental health, anti-vaping policy and education, equity, inclusion and social justice, and affordable housing and homelessness. The delegation was comprised of students, community members and staff from the city of Livermore, the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District, Las Pecitas College and L A R P D, all of them having representation during the live presentation. Plans are currently in the works for National Civic League to visit Livermore and present the, the plaque to the city sometime in the coming months, yet a date yet to be determined. I also like to call everybody's attention to that new to this year's All American City Awards Program was a virtual cultural entertainment showcase in which the public could vote for their favorite submissions. Out of the twenty-three total videos from various communities, Livermore Shakespeare Festival's Kids Teach Shakespeare took home the prize. So congratulations to Lisa Tromovich and her team. I'd also again like to say thanks to everybody that participated and all the people behind the scenes in putting together the delegation and the talking points and the material that we had to support the ten-minute live virtual presentation. Finally, I'd just like to say congratulations to all. And when I mean all, I mean everybody in this community that makes Livermore a remarkable place to live. And now we can claim ourselves as an All American City as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for telling us about the award and giving us some background. Want to let everybody know that you were one of the presenters in the final competitive round. And you did a great job along with your fellow presenters. It was surely a great team effort, as you mentioned, just a vast array of people involved. I especially want to acknowledge Superintendent Bowers' leadership. She played a key role in our application and win. So thank you all and it's a great honor.
Indeed, thank you.
And so the, one last item before I open public forum. And I'd like to discuss the, the very disturbing recent attack on one of our police officers where he was almost deliberately run over on his motorcycle. I think many of you may have heard of this. And just a few days earlier, we held a very moving ceremony to honor those in the military who have died while serving to protect our country and our way of life. And this recent attack is a sobering reminder that our police officers put their lives on the line every day to protect our community. And, you know, violence against our police officers is unacceptable and then an attack on our officers is an attack on our community. I've lived here forty-five years and impressed by just how professionally and well our officers consistently perform their mission in what can be very tough circumstances. I know that this community appreciates and thanks our officers for the risks they take on our behalf. And the, the officer narrowly escaped being killed, but was injured. And we wish him a quick recovery. I have full confidence in our police department to bring this offender to justice. And end with saying, I'm grateful to all our officers who serve our community. This council, like all others before, values our officers and Livermore values you. So thank you. And it's just incredible what happened. It's just unacceptable. So I wanted to mention that. And now we're on to citizens forum. I would like the city clerk to tell everyone how to participate if they so desire.
Thank you, Mayor. In participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I should point out that it's, see what time is it now? Let's say it's seven thirty-five. And so let's, let's say seven forty at that point. And so if we haven't concluded a public comment by eight, ten, then we'll continue it towards the end of the meeting. And remember that the citizens forum is for items not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak to an agenda item, wait for that item to come up. So could we like to open citizens forum and could we have the first person who wishes to speak, please?
Honorable Mayor, the first speaker is Jackie Cota, followed by John Marshawn, followed by Lori Souza. Jackie Cota, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the city for forcing agenda-based Marxist revolutionary agendas upon the community under the guise of inclusivity in your efforts to transform the consciousness of society by making goal number twenty-sixth of the forty-five communist goals from nineteen fifty-eight as read into the congressional record in nineteen sixty-three, now standard operating procedure of council by choosing to segregate a group of community members as a special entity while trampling on the city of Livermore's first paragraph of the norms and values which state employees of the city share values and principles which are moral and honorable, adhere to an ethical standard of fairness, honesty and equitable treatment, unquote. How convenient it was that you chose to bypass public comment on the agenda item four dot eight from meeting date, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Many citizens told you that we already fly an inclusive flag every day at city hall and that is Old Glory, which represents every citizen of the United States of America. However, as with all Marxist revolutionaries, you have again perverted the job of council by promoting the division of people into hostile groups. Stalin said, quote, "Most of the people pushing communist causes are not communists and that's what legitimizes our movement," unquote. They're always trying to pull the useful idiots in. So when people say, you're a communist, the person will reply, I'm not a communist. They love getting the crowd involved. We realize alphabet efforts come from a place of hurt and entitlement, from possible past experiences and confusion. But redefining language by saying, if you're not pro alphabet agenda, you're somehow against it, is simply not true. What the community is concerned about are the actual masters of deceit behind the agenda and the constant efforts to defy and discredit family as an institution, take away the teaching of morality from parents and encourage and promote promiscuity at the expense of children. Your efforts, assuming as being virtuous, have had the opposite effect on the community because your decision has angered the majority and in turn demonized the community for which you profess to promote by involving the city in a political agenda. So we are once again at a crossroad of disconnect with you. In the last month, you've taken it upon yourself to destroy the property values and ambience of our downtown. And now you've taken it upon yourself to destroy the culture of our downtown by involving yourself in the political ideology of division and agenda. You may see yourselves as being woke, but have become a joke. Your efforts are not equal or inclusive. Vladimir Lenin would be proud. And for that, we say shame on you.
The next speaker is John Marshawn, followed by Lori Souza, followed by Alan Burnham. John Marshawn, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Congratulations on the recognition as an All American City. The video by Livermore Shakespeare, the two of the second graders teaching Shakespeare was phenomenal. It's wonderful. So with that, there was a half-page ad that ran in last week's Independent that falsely claims that the city is ignoring toxic waste under the site that was approved for Veterans Park and Eden Housing. Very simply, that is not true. The purpose of the ad was to create fear and distrust in our community by using the instantly recognizable symbol for radioactive contamination. This is part of a carefully crafted misinformation campaign. The truth is, there is no radioactive contamination on this site. Many of you know, I spent my career as a chemist protecting the safety of our drinking water. Part of that job was ensuring that our water was safe from underground contamination and monitoring toxic waste sites. In nineteen ninety-six, as the president of the Zone Seven Water Board, I called attention to plumes of toxic M T B E that were under this lucky site. Contrary to the misinformation in the Independent ad, this is not new information. There is also lead, arsenic and other hydrocarbons, just like there have been toxic chemicals for forty years under what will become Livermorean Plaza. For eight years, the city has fought Chevron to get that site cleaned up and it will be cleaned up before the city starts construction on the new park. It is just like the city knew about the toxic soil contamination that was left behind under the growth site across the street that was also mitigated before construction started. That is what is going to happen at the Eden site before construction starts. If the members of this group of many names truly believed that this site was as contaminated as they claim, then they should instead support the site remaining a parking lot and a parking garage and never becoming a park where children would play. Contrary to what the ad states, the knowledge of the chemicals on these sites is nothing new and it was not unknown. They will be mitigated. What is new is this ongoing toxic attack against our elected city council. There is a multimillion-dollar campaign that has been orchestrated by the two people who represent the leadership of the Bankhead Board. The city of Livermore owns the Bankhead. As our community recovers from the pandemic, these board members should be working with the city council and not attacking it. Sadly, if there are new toxins, quite simply, they are solely from this toxic campaign of misinformation that is trying to poison our community.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Alan Burnham, followed by Kabane. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and city council members. Congratulations for being recognized as one of this year's All America City Award winners. And thank you for approving the Eden Housing proposal. I'm dismayed by some of the expensive advertising being distributed that is trying to mislead our community about the Eden Housing development. Fortunately, the cities, citizens of Livermore are too smart for this tactic. They know that soil sampling and remediation is quite routine for construction projects. They might also recognize that the ads are displaying a hazardous material symbol that doesn't even match the alleged contaminants being listed in the ad. If the rich and privileged sponsors of the ad believe the toxicity is so pervasive, why do they want to build a park there? Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Burnham, followed by Kabane, followed by Dawn Argula. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Mayor and honorable council members, I'm Alan Burnham, a Livermore resident. Fifty years ago, I took a college class in propaganda analysis. The toxic advertisement in last week's Independent and some of the letters opposing the Eden Housing Project are good examples of propaganda methods perfected fifty to one hundred years ago. Does the public have the scientific and legal literacy required to see through these emotionally driven partial truths? One example is that the ad used the symbol for radioactive waste in combination with the words toxic waste. Do the Eden Housing opponents think rad waste is present or do they just not understand chemistry and physics? Or maybe they just picked images and words to deceive people and inflame their fears and passions as a standard for propaganda. The advertisement also implies that a letter from the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Board said that additional investigation was needed prior to project approval. But the only letter at the time the project was approved actually approved the relevant reports so far and asked for continued work, reporting and approvals during subsequent project, uh, project steps prior to construction. And by the way, Eden does not yet have its construction permits. That is a further step down the road. This entire process is standard for brownfield development as discussed by city staff at the decision meeting. And it needs to be done whether or not the city, the site becomes a housing or a park. Are the housing opponents so concerned about the contamination that they want to fence off all the downtown parking? Or is this simply a diversionary tactic to advance their true goal, which is to stop the housing project? Do they realize that restarting the planning process will delay the mitigation for five to ten years or more? I doubt they really care. I urge you to clear the air on this issue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kabane, followed by Dawn Argula. Kabane, please unmute yourself.
Dawn of command, good evening. There is considerable contamination underneath the Eden Housing downtown property. Given the degree, excuse me, of contamination associated with this property, the Tri-Valley Sierra Club passed the following resolution. Whereas the San Francisco Bay Area Regional Water Quality Control Board is currently investigating documented contamination on the Eden Housing property involving serious contaminants in the soil, in the groundwater and possible surface vapors, including but not limited to arsenic, lead, petroleum hydrocarbons, tetrachloroethylene or P C E, dichlorothene or D C E, benzene and other volatile organic compounds, chemicals that are known to cause cancer, learning disabilities and other serious health issues. Be it resolved that the Tri-Valley Sierra Club, who has jurisdiction over this area, supports any actions to delay this development until the Water Board concludes their investigation, releases to the public the extent and degree of contamination, the cleanup remediation plan and the Livermore City Council and Eden Housing give the public thirty days to review and comment on the impacts of the contamination in its entirety. According to the intermediate remediation plan filed by the city to the Water Board, May seventeenth, but not released to the public, the city plans to clean up the site by venting treated contamination into the air. How long will the cleanup last? Were residents in the nearby condominiums and apartments notified about the treated contamination releases? Were businesses and restaurants notified? Where will these vents be located? Will the venting of treated contaminants continue after the apartments are built? What are the total costs of cleanup? Isn't the safest solution to move Eden Housing to another site? The city needs to release all cleanup plans, including the May seventeenth intermediate plan to the public and to hold a hearing after a thirty-day review period so the public and future residents can better understand and comment on the contamination issues covering this property. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Dawn Argula. Dawn Argula, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Dawn Argula. And I'm speaking to you tonight both as a longtime resident of Livermore and as the CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations, Livermore and the city of Livermore and the school district and all of our partners out there on being recognized as a twenty twenty-one All American City. I had the privilege and honor of moderating our, our panel presentation. I am keenly aware of all of the activities that are going on in this city. But to witness it firsthand was very impressive and very inspiring. So to all of, everyone who participate, participated in the application and the preparation. So to all of, everyone who participated, participated in the application and the preparation and the presentation and all of the work that is going on right now to really move the needle and make progress on some really important and big issues for this community. Thank you, and sincere appreciation on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I also want to remark upon the Community Asset Management Program, and as a resident, I am a member of that committee. And I want to thank Committee Chair Donna Allen and the team, and Debbie Bell, who heads that up, and my committee members. Oftentimes, I find that our public assets are unrecognized and unappreciated by the public for which it's provided. And so it is impressive that the city of Livermore has created this program, this program and asset management program, while every city and jurisdiction in the, in the country doesn't have this. There's something wrong with that. So kudos to all of you on that. But really, this is just really increasing the profile of city public assets, our infrastructure, what is that? Our roads, our sidewalks, our buildings, and our city-owned parks and properties. And to prioritize ongoing investment in managing these assets and investing in them. So thank you for that. And then also, I would like to comment on the proclamations. Thank you. This is what makes Livermore so great and, you know, is looking forward-looking and making progress. We are in the 21st century, people, after all. So yay for recognizing the importance and the value of our elders, for our pride community, many leaders on the community in that. I have many nears and dears who are part of that community. So thank you, thank you for recognizing them. And Juneteenth. Well, thank you. That's amazing. The city of Livermore is recognizing that event and that occasion and the meaning of it. So, and our, and our students, our next generation, they are our succession plan. So thank you for recognizing them with these awards. Thank you to the city council. Good night.
And that concludes a public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you all for your comments. And next up is the consent calendar, and there was apparently some confusion last week on behalf of some of the participants. The consent calendar is moved usually as one block. And when we open the public comment on the consent calendar, there's the opportunity to comment on any item. Just need to say which of the four dot whatevers you're talking about. So I hope it's clear this week that if you want to comment on the consent calendar, do so when I open the public comment, and you're free to do so on any item. So with that, everyone's been instructed on how to participate in the consent counter. And before I go any further here, I'll just open up for a public comment. Do we have anybody who wishes to comment on any consent calendar item?
Honorable mayor, yes, we do.
Okay. Could you please state which item you want to speak to?
Donna Kabane, please unmute yourself.
I had a question. There was a capital improvement plan, and I'm not sure if this comes under this calendar consent or at another point in the meeting. So I'm asking a question on that.
Okay, would the city staff like to answer that?
The approval of your budget and your capital improvement program are included in your consent calendar this evening.
Then I do wish to speak on a couple of items.
Then go ahead. You've got, start the timer, please.
Okay, I have some questions about some of the allocations in the capital improvement plan. Why is there a need to help finance the FBO for Kaiser Air and its possible runways and runoff basins now? The city report states that the Kaiser Air project is anticipated for 2023, 24. As you know, the Kaiser Air expansion to bring in 737 jets to Livermore is very controversial, and hearings have not yet occurred. It seems very premature to set aside money for this expansion at this time. Doing so would imply the project will go forward. Yes, the airport is a relief airport for smaller planes. It has not been designated a relief airport for jets unless the Kaiser project goes through. Does allocating funds for runways and storm basins now prevent the city council from approving the Kaiser Air expansion in the future? And my second question is about the money for a traffic light proposed for Greenville and Patterson Pass. The report only states that the traffic light is needed for future development, but does not state what the new development is. The Valley Link Rail Project well-created train station and housing at South Front Road, not Greenville. So why is the $5,000 needed now for a traffic light at Greenville? Aren't there more congested intersections that could use a traffic light now and place a one in Greenville Road? Please explain in detail with data the necessity of these expenditures. Thank you.
Do you have any, at this point, city staff want to answer those questions?
Certainly regarding the first item having to do with the airport. The item in the budget there is for improvements to the runoff basins. This would serve the airport and potentially any potential FBO that would be located there. The item is in your budget overall. It does not require or expect a particular project to be approved without the item in your budget. However, the, if the item were ultimately considered and approved, the improvements could not move forward as quickly. We do expect that the timing of the item would be adjusted based on when improvements were required at the airport. If no improvements were required, the funds would remain in the airport improvement funds where they are currently, and the item would not be constructed in this configuration at this time. Related to detailed analysis of the traffic signal at Greenville, I'm going to ask our city engineer Bob Vind to weigh in on that. The dollars in those, in that area are for planning, but I'm going to have him elaborate.
Well, actually, that signal was completed and energized just recently, and the money in there is for closeout activities. The, the comment in the project description relative to needed to support development is meant for overall development of the general plan. So it wasn't referring to any specific development in the vicinity of the signal.
Okay, another question for you along we're on this. It's my understanding for the, you know, the Super Bowl that was here, something like 120 jets came into our airport as a reliever. Is that correct?
Honorable mayor, that is correct. The airport is sized and scaled to support the size of aircraft that include many jets. And in fact, many jets have landed there, and your example of the Super Bowl is one example of that.
Right. So functioning as a reliever airport is not dependent on a Kaiser proposal. Is that's correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's, you know, I think it's important that correct information be stated here. I see that council, are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, sir. Jackie Cota, please unmute yourself.
Hello. Sorry, there's a delay. Am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to please make a comment about item 4.6. Am I able to go?
Yeah. Do you want to state what, let's see, I'm just making sure I roll to it. That's the MOU between the city of Livermore and the Livermore Police Management Association.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I would like to respectfully just commend our city police officers for their valor and their bravery in, in meeting the absolute tyranny that has been lodged against them in this, over this past year. With respect to our officers and with the city now making decisions to fly special flags in honor of people, I would like to respectfully request that since National Police Week has been postponed as far as the honoring of police officers this year, I would like to respectfully request that the city consider flying the Thin Blue Line flag the National Police Week for the month of October. Our police officers have been consistently demonized at statements of people in the community, as well as just previously in this council meeting, of the systemic racism that has been lodged against a community that has absolutely no backing and based in fact or numbers. And so therefore, I would like to request that the city please rectify the situation by honoring our police officers by flying the Thin Blue Line flag, which stands for the thin blue line between good and evil that they protect us from on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public wish to speak on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on the consent calendar. And I see that Councilmember Kick has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because I got some questions about it. Mark, is, the budget is a large item, but the reason it's on consent is we already had the opportunity to give feedback on it at a workshop, correct?
Councilmember Kick, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and yes, in May, the council held a workshop that was dedicated only to everything in your budget and capital improvement program, received public feedback on that council direction, and the item before you this evening reflects those comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for some people that have asked. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council member wish to pull a particular item for a conversation? Or if not, we have the approval of the minutes separated so that Councilmember Banano can abstain. So can we get a motion for 4.1?
I'll move 4.1.
And Vice Mayor Monroe, you're seconding?
Yep.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano abstains for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. All right. That passes unanimously for those who didn't abstain. So can we, can I get a motion for 4.2 through the rest of the consent calendar?
I'll move 4.2 to 414.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. Okay, passes unanimously. We're now on to item 5.1, public hearings.
I had, excuse me, Mayor Warner, I had my hand up. I just wanted to make a closing comment on consent calendar.
Certainly.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, there's, they're, these are items that are routine as we, as we, or you just mentioned. So they get approved together, but I just want to recognize the amount of work that staff puts into. There's just a tremendous amount of work in each of those 14 items that we just approved. So I don't want to go without mentioning and appreciating staff's work on, on these consent calendar items, which is a significant amount that doesn't always get called out specifically because they're lumped together.
I think that's where a lot of the basic blocking and tackling happens. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of quality work. So I'm glad you pointed it out, and we, you know, it's a lot of work. So now, I'd like to go on to 5.1, the public hearing. On that's to consider amending the Livermore Municipal Code and Livermore Development Code to reactivate onsite affordable housing requirements for rental projects and make administrative updates to the Affordable Housing Program and the Affordable Housing in Lufi. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce Management Analyst Great Stretzoff, who's going to lead us through our presentation this evening. And Grace, you are muted if you are speaking.
Apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies, everyone. Can you hear me and see my slides? Okay. Excellent. So tonight's staff will be sharing information about Proposed Development Code Amendment 21003 and Municipal Code Amendment 21001. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to consider amending the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance, also referred to as its Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which requires residential development projects to contribute to the production of affordable housing units for low-income and moderate-income families. The city of Livermore has been setting inclusionary housing policies since 1987, and the current Affordable Housing Ordinance was codified in 2000. These policies have been a critical tool for creating housing security for Livermore families, fostering inclusive, integrated communities, and producing affordable units across the housing continuum. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance was, has produced over 180 homes for low- and moderate-income first-time homebuyers, approximately 25% of whom were Livermore schoolteachers. In addition to ownership, the city Inclusionary Housing policies have also helped produce affordable rental units, which are also referred to as below-market rate or inclusionary units. The program has contributed to the city's inventory of over 1,000 affordable rental units through housing fees and the direct construction of below-market rate units. While the city of Livermore's Affordable Housing Ordinance has always had requirements both for for sale and for rental development projects, in 2010, the city put some of its inclusionary requirements for rental projects on hold due in part to a 2009 court decision that questioned the legality of local inclusionary housing requirements for rental. That court decision was superseded in 2017 by Assembly Bill 1505, which authorized cities to adopt inclusionary housing requirements for rental projects. Since the passage of that bill, numerous cities, including Pleasanton and Dublin, have added rental projects to their Affordable Housing ordinances. The city-specific Affordable Housing requirements are outlined in Section 10.06050 of the Livermore Development Code and Chapter 3.26 of the Municipal Code. The inclusionary requirements for ownership projects are 15% for developments in the general plan area and 10% for developments in the downtown plan area, which the ordinance amendment will not be changing. The Development Code also establishes construction and implementation standards for affordable housing units, including minimum unit sizes and requirements for affordable units to be comparable to a project's market-rate homes, as well as integrated throughout a residential development project. Development Code also provides alternative methods of complying with the inclusionary requirements, such as land dedication or paying an in-lufi. Projects with 10 or less units are allowed to satisfy their entire affordable housing requirement by paying the in-lufi and can do so by right. For residential projects of 11 or more units, alternatives to building the Affordable Housing requirements on site must have city council approval. The city works extensively with developers to maximize the impact of each residential development and ensure alternatives are economically equivalent to building the required units on site. The city also ensures that every alternative method of compliance addresses city council affordable housing priorities, which are currently focused on developing a pipeline of 100% affordable rental housing projects, including those for people experiencing homelessness and administering the first-time homebuyer program goals. These requirements are designed to allow the city to create opportunities like Chestnut Square, where the city was able to convert a dilapidated shopping center into a vibrant, multi-generational, mixed-income community with 114 affordable housing units for seniors and families. The city was able to acquire and assemble the parcels for this complex three-phase project by combining land dedication through the inclusionary ordinance with by combining land dedication through the inclusionary ordinance with funds from housing in-lu fees. In-lug fee funds allow the city to build affordable housing that is not produced through the market or onsite requirements, such as deeply affordable units and projects with supportive services. Avance Apartments, which will provide 44 units of service-supported housing for people with developmental disabilities, is a prime example of a 100% affordable housing project that in-lug fees help support. Staff are proposing that the city restore Livermore's rental requirements as they were prior to 2010, which are very similar to the for-sale requirements. Rental projects in the general plan area would be required to set aside 15% of their total project units as affordable, with 7.5% rented to low-income households, which is defined as 80% of area median income, and the other half, 7.5%, set aside for very low-income households earning less than 50% of the area median income. Like for-sale projects, 10% of the units for rental development in the downtown specific plan area would need to be set aside for low-income households. Also, like for-sale inclusionary units, the maximum affordable rental price for units subject to these requirements are set annually by city council and posted to the city's housing website. The same alternative methods of compliance that are currently in the Development Code would be available for rental project development. For all projects that are subject to the onsite requirements, which are developments of 11 or more units, this amendment codifies the methodology for calculating the in-lug fee that city council approved for prior developments. Some of the other clarifications and codifications of existing policies and practices that are in this proposed Affordable Housing Ordinance Amendment include incorporating the Affordable Housing Requirements from the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan, which were established by city council in November 2020 for both rental and ownership projects. Another is clarifying what ongoing administrative costs the developers responsible for, such as ongoing city monitoring of the units. It also requires alternative methods of compliance to be economically equivalent to building the units onsite. And it explicitly states some obvious standards regarding the uniform treatment of all buyers and tenants, such as prohibiting a developer from charging affordable housing unit clients a special fee that's not charged to market-rate clients. On March 31st, 2021, staff held a public meeting to receive questions and comments regarding the proposed changes to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Courtesy notices were sent to local homebuilders, developers, and other members of the building industry who could be affected by the ordinance amendment. No comments were received during the stakeholder outreach process. On May 4th, 2021, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to adopt Resolution 1321, which recommends the city council approve Development Code Amendment 21003. The Planning Commission recommendation included an amending motion regarding implementation considerations of the ordinance. When implementing the ordinance and developing low-income housing agreements for city council to approve, staff is guided by the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Priorities that city council establishes in its two-year work plan. If city council approves introducing the proposed ordinance amendments at tonight's meeting, a second reading to adopt the ordinance amendments will be included on the city council agenda for June 28th, 2021. If passed, the ordinance amendment would go into effect in July, 30 days following the final adoption of the ordinance amendments. Applications that are determined to be complete by the planning division before the effective date would not be subject to the amended ordinance. Planning Commission and staff recommend that city council introduce an ordinance approving Development Code Amendment 21003, and finding the update to the City of Livermore's Affordable Housing Program is not a subject, is not a project, excuse me, under CEQA. Staff also recommend that city council introduce an ordinance, both approving Municipal Code Amendment 21001 and finding that an update to the City of Livermore's Affordable Housing Fee is not a project under CEQA. That concludes staff presentation, and we are now available for questions.
Before we turn to questions from the council, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
Honorable Mayor, yes, we do.
Okay, could we have them, please?
Sure. Donna Kabine, please unmute yourself.
I believe developers should provide affordable housing units onsite in all projects. No exceptions. If the city is serious about affordable housing and insists on the urgent need for such housing, then developers should not be allowed to pay in-lug fees in place of housing units. In-lug fees can sit in accounts for months or years. If affordable housing is an urgent need, then require all projects to provide affordable units onsite regardless of the number of units. The developers can make up the difference with units sold at market value. Do not provide an escape clause with this revision of in-lug fees, or we will never have enough affordable housing for entry-level workers, seniors, students, and the disabled. Mr. Resner stated at the Planning Commission meeting, May 4th, that the city council can require units over the developer paying in-lug fees, and that's in the packet on page 1093, third paragraph. Affordable housing, I also disagree with the finding that affordable housing projects should be exempt from CEQA review. It would not be prudent for the city to exempt affordable housing sites from CEQA review. These sites must be proven safe for current and future residents. The best way for this to happen is through the CEQA process, which was adopted by the state to ensure the safety of all projects. You can follow current state law without enacting redundant city ordinances that may in fact impact the safety and well-being of residents in the future. There are many parcels surrounding the Isabel Specific Plan that could have contamination from the airport. These sites designated for affordable housing should have the same environmental review as other developments in the city. Please delete provisions and findings implying that CEQA review is not a necessary component of affordable housing. Again, I caution any wording or finding that would weaken CEQA to the detriment of future residents. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, so closed public comment. I see Councilmember Kick. What would you like? Go ahead.
Can you clarify for me, staff? Are we saying that all housing with any affordable housing development on it whatsoever is exempt from CEQA, or that this action, this ordinance, is exempt from CEQA?
Councilmember Kick, Mark Roberts, your city manager. The action this evening has no effect on how individual projects with affordable housing are reviewed under the California Environmental Quality Act. The statement this evening is the act of updating your regulations and of adopting the new requirements for rental housing are not a project under CEQA, and therefore are exempt from that, and that is by the provisions of the state law itself, which defines actions that the council can take, which are not deemed a project. The other item that we do want to clarify, and we'll say it one more time, is the ordinance that you are adopting this evening and the entire package of regulations require projects to build affordable housing onsite as the default for all projects throughout the community that are larger than 10 units. Projects smaller than 10 units can pay a fee for that by right, and that is simply because of the math of not being able to slice a unit into fractions. But with that exception, every other project in the City of Livermore is required by this ordinance and has been in the past to build their units onsite unless the city council makes a finding and actually approves that alternative. The only reason that we've approved that in the past is to be able to provide more affordable housing than we could if it were done onsite.
Thank you. So 10 units and under for can fee out, and projects like Avance would not be possible without those fees. So I think that's good. I'm happy to see that apparently Donna is really excited about affordable housing now, so maybe she's changed her mind from her earlier statement. So I think this is great. I'm happy to see that we are moving on to not just talk about affordable housing when it comes to purchase. I mean, that's a great program that we have, but in order for people to save that down payment for purchase, they need to pay less than 30% of their income on their rent, so they can set aside that money so they can eventually purchase their home. So I really appreciate that this is coming back. And if I have my history right, Mark, we were one of the first cities to have an ordinance like this, and now we're bringing it back. So I think that's very cool. We're kind of honoring our city history by doing this as well.
Okay, Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I just have two real quick questions. I think this one's obvious, but in a rental situation where you're turning over properties occasionally, a unit that was very low, allocated for a very low income would always stay a very low-income unit, right? We would always attempt to maintain the 7.5%, 7.5% split. Is that correct?
The number of units that are provided as a part of the onsite requirement for rental housing would remain the same. The actual physical units in a rental project could theoretically change, and in fact, sometimes do, as long as the unit is comparable, distributed appropriately, and consistent with the agreement that the developer ultimately enters into with the city.
Great. And then another one, just more because I'm curious. What constitutes a complete planning application? And that applies to the condition that when the department deems a application complete, that's at what point, if it's complete before July 28th, it would qualify under this ordinance to have this, make this requirement? So my question is, is a final planning application the step just before it goes to Planning Commission?
So the technical answer to your question is that an application has been submitted with all information required by the Development Code for the type of application on which the submittal is based. And that is essentially an essential step. It's the step that takes place right before staff begins its analysis of the project. And of course, that's the step right before we bring an item to Planning Commission for review, recommendation, or approval.
Okay, great. So it's a little different than what I thought. Thanks for clarifying that. That's all I had. I'm supportive of this, of this item as well.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Yeah, I'm not sure this is really a question. This is really just an appreciation for the fact that we have a long history of setting a goal towards providing housing for all, that that included rental housing as well as bought housing, houses we own as well as houses we rent. And that as it's become possible to do that, we're doing it again. I'm also, the more I've learned about the multiple modes that we use to ensure that we house as many people as as many income levels as possible, it's quite an effort. It takes a lot of work on the part of the city staff. I think that in looking at this, it took a fair bit to look at the, this category here, that category there, but it's all in service of making sure that we're able to be flexible. And I really wanted to just express my appreciation for that.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments from the council? Anyone like to make a motion? Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Monroe?
A second.
Okay, and seconded by Councilmember Kick. Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Yes. Okay, passes unanimously. We're on to item 5.2, hearing to approve the city's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and 2015 Urban Water Management Plan and the addendum.
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to hand it off to Steve Aguilar, our Interim Water Resources Division Manager, to introduce the item and hand it off to our presenter this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are presenting the city's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and 2015 Urban Water Management Plan Addendum for approval and adoption. Urban water management plans must be prepared by water suppliers every five years. These plans support the long-term resource planning to ensure that adequate water supplies are available to meet existing and future water needs. Every urban water supplier that either provides over 3,000 acre-feet of water annually or serves more than 3,000 urban connections is required to submit an urban water management plan. Dr. Yan Ming Zhang, the Water Resources Division Technical Programs Manager, and Sachi Itagaki of Kennedy Jinx, the city's consultants, will now provide a presentation of the city's 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and will be available to answer your questions.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Hey, Sachi, are you in? Sachi, if you call from your cellphone, you need to do a star and a six to unmute yourself. Are you able to get in? Okay, never mind. I'll just present. I prepared this mine as well. So. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Today, I'd like to present our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and addendum to the last Urban Water Management Plan. And later on, another presentation will focus on water shortage and this. So here's our overview. So we'll provide why we need to do this Urban Water Management Plan every five years and for our municipal water system. And from this Urban Water Management Plan, we pretty much look at two things. First is to see what's our demand projection and what's our supply projection? See if the supply can ready meet the demand. And we'll also see, there is a Senator Bill X7-7. We have met the compliance requirement, so I will cover that later. And we will also cover our water resources to see what supplies we have and what quality we are facing. And we will also address the water reliability to see how much water is available in the future under different drought conditions. And we will also have a drought risk assessment for the next five years. And we will cover another topic, which is the reduced delta reliance, that will be the addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. So first and foremost, this plan only covers the Livermore Municipal Water System. As you can see, it covers the Isabel System, AirPro System, and we also have Sprint Town Area, and we also have the industrial area in the west, in the east part of the city, north of the two laps. And the center part of the city is provided by Cal Water Service, Cal Water, California Water Service Company, which they will go to their board for adoption. So today, the one we covered is covered about 1/3 of the city population and 1/2 of the city area. So here's the timeline. So on May 28th, we made those plans available to the public, and we are open for collecting comments. And today, we'll present this to the council. And later on, by July 1st, we will submit the whole package to the DWR. So while we are doing this update, because it's required by the California Urban Water Management Plan Act every five years, last time we did it was 2015. So this year is 2020, then later on, five years, we've got to do it again. So it updates planning evaluations of availability, reliability, and the quality of the water supplies that informs other planning. For example, we need to do a water supply verification for new development that is greater, that has more than 500 units, and we also need the information to invest on our water supply infrastructures. And also, it gives us eligibility for future state grants if you want to apply for any. We look at four different aspects from this plan. First, we look We look at four different aspects from this plan. First, we look at. The water used by different sectors such as residential, industrial and irrigation. And then we look at our supply source to see how much water we imported, how much water is from the local. And we also need to check how's our. Our local water quality, do we, are we facing any issues that impact our supplies? And later on, we'll see how reliable our water supply can be. So first of all, let's take a look at the population and the demand forecasting. So based on the review of historical trend and the current usage and also based on our future projection. Of the developments. At each um parcel development, we also apply some adjustment factor. We look. We project our population to be a fair amount of increase. This is largely due to the development of Isabel neighborhood. So right now we have a little over thirty thousand, but later on we will reach more than forty five thousand people uh within our service area. Here's the extra and the forecasted water demand. As you can see, there was a big drop in twenty fifteen, of course, due to the. Drought condition we are facing and uh in twenty twenty, you see a pretty high peak because everybody works from home due to COVID. And our future forecasted potable water demand is generally increased. But eventually will reach uh, will will reach to a good outlook. Another topic is uh SBS um X seven dash seven compliance. Um, back in two thousand nine, the governor required us to have a twenty percent reduction based on the ten years average previously. So, as you can see, our baseline number is two hundred forty gallons per person per day. So our goal for year twenty twenty is one hundred ninety-two. Even during this COVID uh scenario, everybody walks home, we still. Be able to manage our water demand slightly under that. So we have met our goals. Everybody has been doing a wonderful job on water conservation, so we are all good in this case. So let's take a look at the water supply and how the quality of the water. I'd like to uh bring this out first, that um liberal more municipal water purchased a hundred percent of water. From the only water wholesaler, which is Zone Seven Water Agency. Zone Seven Water Agency, they have different sources for water. For example, the during a good years, they have about eighty percent of the water. Imported from the state water project and they also have water transfers from another irrigation district. They have a local storage, they have non-local storage and they have groundwater extraction as different sources. For water supply and water storage. Of course, liberal more municipal water treatment plant is providing recycled water to our Isabel neighborhood. Staff level, we are working hard with Zone Seven and other retailers to diversify the waters. Supply portfolio of Zone Seven. Zone Seven is currently pursuing several projects. Including Delta Command, Convenience Project, Set Reservoir Project, Reservoir Expansion Project. Bay Area Disorination Plant Project and Potable Water Reuse and smaller and different water transfers and exchanges. And they also make different inter ties with other water retailers, make sure if there's a. Uh, disaster events, we can get water one way or the other. So you can see some of the project belong to supply project, some project belong to storage and convenience projects. So they are really working hard to divi- diversify their water supply portfolio. So, um, you know, water from different sources will have different water quality. So there's a slightly, a problem with each water resource. But is fixable and we have different solutions to make sure all the water from different resources. Will meet all the regulations. They will be a hundred percent safe to drink. Then you will see all the solution to the right uh column of this table. That means we are totally uh okay with current water quality. Another important water supply is our recycle water made by the treatment wastewater treatment plants. So as you can see, um, there are. Different uh user categories. For example, we have a landscape irrigation. We have lots of positives, of course. We have commercial use. We have also the industrial use and other. Um, smaller use such like a construction water. Um, here we show the actual water use and the projected recycle water use. As you can see, um, our landscape irrigation will go up. Uh, towards twenty forty and our industrial use will go down later on, largely because. Wastewater Trend Plant as a major industrial user. Will improve their system performance and add different new technologies to reduce the what recycle water use. And we can save the recycled water for other users that has increasing water demand for future such as landscapes. Let's take a look at the water reliability. As I mentioned before, Zone Seven purchased, oh, we purchased all the water from Zone Seven. Zone Seven during their oven water management plan, they have. Uh, projections for different scenario, for example, normal new year projection, single dry year projection. And five consecutive year uh projection. So under all the scenario, they said their supply will surplus their water demand. Since we are purchasing all the water from Zone Seven, that means liberal most demand can be met as well. Here is just a snapshot of scenario for even more municipal water. This one shows a normal year projected water supply and the demand without doing the conservation. So if you see the, the green bar shows the supply and the blue line shows the demand. In this case, our demand always meet our supply. One thing I need to uh bring up is. This only represent the average supply and the demand scenario. So maybe under extreme condition, there is slightly the one percent or two percent chance. That the demand cannot, the supply cannot meet the demand, but overall, if you look at the average value. All the demand will be met by the supply under a normal year scenario. So the next one shows a single dry year projected water supply and demand without conservation. Same thing. If we just base on the current's dry year condition without conservation. We still have enough water to meet our demand. Next year shows a five year um projected water demand without conservations. So, um, in year twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty-four, all the way through twenty forty-nine. We have enough water to supply our demand. So, as I mentioned, all those three scenarios, we are in good shape. And those thing has been confirmed under Zone Seven's oven water management plan this year. We also did a drought risk assessment for the next five years. So this table show the water use and total supply. As you can see. Even for the next five year short term projection, everything looks good. All the supplies can meet our demand. The reason why you see so many zero in the last column, last row is. Uh, we know Zone Seven will have more than enough water, but however, we are not sure. Um, how many, how much water are they gonna actually they will give us? So that's why we put zero percent in there, just want to be conservative. But the message we get from here is all the demand is can be met by the supplies. And also there is one addendum to the twenty fifteen oven water management plan, which. Ask us to reduce the reliance on the delta. So a little background, Sacramento Sarah King Delta Reform Act of twenty two thousand nine requires Delta water users. To reduce reliance on water from the Delta. Requires state and local public agencies proposing a covered action in the Delta. Prepare recent certification of consistency with legislation. Current action include importing water from the Delta transfers, exchanges, including state water project supply. Insurance for the future recommended to amend twenty fifteen oven water management plan. And inclusion in the twenty twenty oven water management plan updates for any potential covered action. That will benefit liberal more municipal water system. So this graph shows. Um, how much water. Uh, is is a water demand from our service area and the blue bar shows how much water actually are getting from the Delta. The red line shows what's the percentage of the supply. Actually comes from Delta. The message we take from this graph is you want to see the red line keeps going down. Because that that tells us we are reduced, we are relying less and less on the Delta. Um, so which is a good news and that's the way we want to be. Overall, we are more shows a reduction in reliance on the Delta watershed with increasing percent of supplies. Contributing to original self reliance. Supplies are provided by Zone Seven. Reduction in Delta reliance is a product of increased water use efficiency and an increased use of recycled water. Which tells us if everybody keeps using water in an efficient way. And we increase our recycle water uh demand, then we're on the right track to reduce our reliance on the Delta. Uh, right now we are coming to the public comment period. So so far, I haven't received any comments directly to me. Um, but today's meeting, I think is a good chance for the public to speak out, to see if they have any concerns. And we will incorporate them into the final version of this plan. So next stop is, uh, we would like to ask council to adopt oven water management plan. So we can submit everything to Department of Water Resources by July first. And that concludes my presentation for this topic.
Hey, thank you. At this point, I'll open it up to um, see if we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this item.
Honorable Mayor, we do.
Okay.
Donna Kapanen, please unmute yourself.
Uh, I had a couple of questions. Um, in the presentation, they were talking about um. Uh, some concerns with deep wells that sometimes have arsenic. Was also wondering if um the consultants looked um or tested for PFAS. Very concerned about uh PFAS in our water supply due to the um possibility of um contamination. From fire retardants being used at the airport. So just wondering if those tests have been um. Uh, thoroughly uh looked at because it might involve removing some of our identified water sources. So I'd like to know the status of PFAS in our water sources. The second, um, I know that the state is not requiring cleanup at this point, but they are requiring that cities. Identify PFAS in um landfills and also near airports. Um, my second question would be that you um identify a greater need, a much greater need for the water. Going from thirty thousand to forty-five thousand because of the Isabel neighborhood. I'm wondering if you um also took into account the possibility of a transit orient development. At South Front Road, which would be part of the Valley Link uh system. And that would um also uh in addition, make an additional source. Uh, of maybe another fifteen thousand residents that would need water. And since your chart went out to twenty forty, I'm wondering if that. Uh, population, projected population was in your um projected. Accounts that we would have enough water, because it seems that lacking that addition, there may be some water shortages. Thank you.
Hey, would uh staff care to comment?
Yes, I will be happy to answer both of the questions. So first of all, the PFAS, um, you know, it's a, it's a hot topic. And Zone Seven as a water supplier and and a wholesaler, they are, they are on top of that. So whenever they say um PFAS comp- compound exceed the. Action limit, they will do treatment, including uh dilution, including um. A membrane filtration. So all they want to do is to make sure the water coming to the distribution system meet the standard. So that's a guaranteed water quality regardless of time. So they are doing this all the time. And on the second question, um, I believe. Any development within even more municipal service area has been counted. I'm not sure if South Front Road, the development you mentioned, belong to California Water Service Company. But it's very likely. The biggest development in my study actually only comes from Isabel neighborhood. But I think I will definitely chat with Cal Water staff to see if they. Have incorporated the large development in their um study, but I think it should be covered.
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager, um, the water supply study is required to take into account. Um, uh, development which is planned for in your current general plan. Um, and in fact, is required to provide adequate water uh for those. The uh area that the speaker referred to, um, the potential for transit oriented development around. Uh, a future potential South Front Station um is not included currently in your general plan. But it is one of the areas that the council called out for study as a part of the update of our general plan. If indeed, at the end of the general plan update process, uh, that area is designated for more intensive development. Um, the water supply plan would be amended at that point to incorporate that new development. Um, as a part of any consideration of a new general plan, potential water supply is required to be studied in detail. And the findings of that study are required prior to any adoption of your updated general plan. So that item uh will be incorporated. It will be studied as a part of any changes to your general plan. And indeed, if we do end up with a transit oriented development or more intensive development around the South Front Station. Um, water for that will be analyzed and that analysis will be provided as part of your general plan update. Prior to the council considering approving any updated general plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other members of the public wish to comment?
Yes, sir. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, Alan Burnham, um, what is the uh salinity of the recycled water? And how, what is its long term effects on the salinity of the aquifer that um the wells come from?
So you asked about the salinity of the recycled water?
Uh, yes.
Well, all the recycled water we produced meet all the um standard established by the state. So it has, um, so so actually, we, we, we meet all the application requirement. That can be safely um used for irrigation water. And uh Zone Seven, as the groundwater management, as a groundwater manager in this region. They have their, um, they have done a more thorough study of the impact. From recycled water on the groundwater. So they did more study than us. But all we know is current treatment of recycled water is all safe for different users. For irrigation purposes.
So uh perhaps we could uh give uh Mr. Burnham a reference to the uh studies.
Very good. Zone Seven's website, they have a very good page that include all the studies they have done recently. They have water supply studies, groundwater studies, so um it's a. They have water supply studies, groundwater studies, so it's a pretty good page that summarize everything.
Yeah, this is Satya Raghak. I can supplement that there's something called a salt and nutrient management plan. Which Zone Seven has prepared to respond to and and make sure that the water quality is being maintained. So I would look for salt and nutrient management plan on the Zone Seven website.
Okay, any other members of the public who wish to comment?
No, sir, that concludes the public.
Okay, thank you. A closed public comment on five dot two, bring it back to the council, any questions, comments? Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much for that report. This is the first one I've received as a council member. Very interesting. Appreciate it and I have a couple of quick questions. So on your several supply demand charts. It would seem to me neither neither the supply nor the demand is a precise number. I mean, they both would have projected ranges, I assume. So is there a reason that that those charts aren't shown with some? Ranges associated with both supply and the and demand or am I not understanding the charts very well?
I can bring up the chart again. So.
Go back one or two to the, yeah, the normal.
For example, this normal year projected.
Yeah, either one, it just I see charts like that and I I I. Wonder why there's no one, no uncertainty associated where maximum and minimum projections or something.
Those numbers are actually the projecting number. So for example, the. The demand is the actual calculation. So for example, twenty twenty five, you are looking at maybe twenty two seven hundred twenty five. Are those numbers are very based on our calculation.
Right, but 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 what I mean is that. The demand is going to be based on population and other other factors of which you would calculate a range, not a precise number. Right? I mean, isn't there, isn't there an uncertainty associated with the? The demand for sure, I mean, our population isn't a certainty. Am I misunderstanding something?
Yes, actually, actually, all the retailers together with. With Zone Seven, we use a same method. That count the number of people. So so the range I'm mentioning actually comes from each development parcel, for example, for each parcel. It could have. For example, three thousand people to five thousand people, right? So that's where the range come from. But for the actual analysis, we use the average, which is the four thousand people. And we have the solid number in the end, that's why we don't leave the range in here. As normally you would say for like a scientific research. That if have a bar, two bars, right, high bar, low bar, but in this case, we only show the average.
Okay, okay, I mean, I I I understand that just from from my standpoint as a technical person, I I I tend to like to see the ranges. Because it gives you a feeling for how how solidly you are, how likely you are to be able to meet the meet the demand. But that's fine, I I I think I understand what you're what you're. Trying to convey.
That was a great question.
Two, two more quick questions. I understand that we're we're getting this report because we are the retailer, City Livermore is a retailer. As you pointed out at the beginning, do we have any, do we even get a briefing? Of any kind that sort of gives us a similar status for Cal Water, not because we are an approval, not. The Cal Water Services Board, I assume approves their plan, but. Do we even have knowledge of it or get a briefing on it to know that the water supply for two thirds of our population is? Is also going to be adequate?
Well, they actually should have notified our city. We are required to notify the the city that provides water. So as the more municipal water, we notify ourselves. So Cal Water should send a copy. At least as a minimum requirement to the city for review. But I think they should reach the council members to give up at least a short presentation.
I was just curious because it affects a lot of our population and we may not be the approving board, but. City staff at least. Knows the results of that report and that analysis to know that we're in good shape for the rest of our population, correct?
Yeah.
And final one, just my curiosity is Chain of Lakes. I saw under your sources, you we had a list of sources. It was zero out there for basically all the years that you showed in the chart are in the table. And I'm just wondering, is there any update on Chain of Lakes and when when that might be providing some? Fraction of our supply, I I just lost track of what the plan was there.
Chain of Lake gonna take some time because the ownership won't be transferred, I think, for. Next many years, I think the the quarry company still owns that part, the majority of the lakes.
Right, I know there was some debate about whether it was going to continue mining and or or turn it over. For to to Zone Seven, so looks like there's. No, no expectation that it's going to be turned back over for any period of time that you're looking at.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Really good report, really learned a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
All right, I I really appreciate the the report as well. And it's. The problem I'm having is is one of, I guess we call it cognitive dissonance, maybe. Where on the one hand, we're coming into. A year of, what is this, their second year of drought? I don't know, I kind of have lost, I I'm not even sure what rain looks like anymore. And on the other hand, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing that even in these dry years. We're seeing enough wa- water to meet our needs. Cut, you know, we're coming up on a hundred and seven degrees, very dry temperatures. And on the other hand, you're 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 showing me that there's this protected water supply that will meet will meet our needs. We've, we're in a water emergency, among other emergencies we've had this year. So what I'm trying to understand is how I reconcile those two things in my real life and in what I. Talked to my community about what they should be doing because honestly, one of my responses to this and I just, you know, tapped it down really quickly. Was, hey, I'm gonna go run the sprinklers, not that I have sprinklers anymore. I'm not sure this is, you know, you're giving us a report, you're telling us that there's going to be enough, so this may not be your job. It may be our job to figure out how to reconcile these, but I am curious to know how you would think about these two. To me, somewhat irreconcilable states of mind.
That's a very good question, I believe. So. So as I mentioned before. All the supply projection is based on average output from a model. Right? And we are this year while looking at one year of extreme drought condition, extremely dry condition. So that could be outlier in their overall model projection. And we also know Zone Seven have different sources for water supply, for example, state water project. Although it provide eighty percent of the water. They have a lot of groundwater storage locally. That can help us through the drought like this year. So next year, we may run very low on the groundwater basin. But if we have enough water from the very wet upcoming winter, then we'll be fine. But this year so far, we do look okay, I think. But in general, what model projected is an overall number. It may slightly different from the normal perception that we are having a drought. As a matter of fact, you know. So far, we are only asking people to do a ten percent voluntary. Demand reduction, we are not telling them to cut about one third of the the water use. So we are not, you know, that bad situation.
So so when you tell me that, you know, if we have a wet year. And and if the what the groundwater is. Okay, or maybe it's not going to be okay, I get very nervous about that, that that is. There's a lot of ifs there.
So we're mixing two different items here, Mark Roberts, your city manager. The item before you right now is your urban water management plan. Which is a projection of essentially our demand out into the future against normal supply. And that is a planning document necessary for us to continue to make sure. That we secure, acquire and deliver the appropriate water rights and ultimately the appropriate water in a normal year. In addition, you are required by the council and your next item on your agenda. Is to review essentially your water storage contingency plan. And that deals with all of the other years, in particular, the ones where we're not normal and we are significantly below normal. And that item is really on point to to the question of. Over the long term, on average, will we have enough supply? The item before you says yes. But the next item deals with, well, what about individual years where we are significantly short? And that is the plan on your next item five point three that deals with those individual years. And that you would adopt a contingency plan about what we do in each of those cases. So while they're related, they're slightly different. One is a long term planning tool and the other is an implementation tool about what happens when things don't turn out normal.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager for pulling me back in. Yes, I was moving on and getting the two mixed up apples and oranges. I think it's still fruit or water is the case, maybe I apologize.
So I'm just gonna ask a question here and then I'll recognize council member kick. What? Mr. City Manager, you said was a very important if. And that is if the future on average is like the past on average. That 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 is the presumption by the definition of normal year. That there is no. Shift. In the water supply. That we don't recover from.
You are correct, and in fact, as you know, there's a raging debate. You know, about how much our long term water supply will change. We certainly expect it to change in frequency. In other words, the number of wet years, we expect to go up sharply and how steep those wet years will be. The number of dry years, we expect to increase in the future. But you're right, this is one case where our modeling is based on past experience. And also with an eye toward noting that the future is going to be somewhat different. So Zone Seven, one of the reasons that we do have the committee that members of the council are a part of. Is in the process of acquiring additional water sources because of the belief that supply might be more erratic over time. Our part of this process is to properly. Estimate demand to communicate with Zone Seven, who is our wholesaler. And their part of the job is to make sure that we have adequate supply over the long term. Once that the necessary supply is estimated and included in these items. The items on this table here, for example, come from Zone Seven. But you're right, future is going to be different.
Well, I, you know, there has to be put into the planning and whether it's in this document or the next one, the. Probability that the future. Won't be like the past in terms of the average, but could you slide over to the? The the one that council member Banano was referencing. And with the that now, I just want to point out here, what I think I heard was that they were talking about the average of four. Between a difference range of three to five. I think that's what I heard, for example.
Oh, that's the, that's actually how you project your the number of people and therefore the the gallons of water you are using.
Sure, so if you assume that they're. Using whatever the same average is with some conservation, but different. But the range, I think, in the answer to Councilmember Banano's question is from three to five or whatever units you want to do. So that's obviously a twenty five percent. Error bar.
I'm just giving example, I'm not specifically saying three thousand or five thousand, I'm just giving example.
Well, I'm just, we're just trying to get an example, but anyway, whatever example you want to use. That's where Councilmember Banano was going, whatever the base assumption is for which you're taking an average. The question was, what's the range? And the in the example you gave us, the range was plus or minus twenty five percent. And if I look at this chart, it's not going from zero. It's, you know, we're only looking at a a hundred out of twenty seven, one out of twenty seven. So we're looking at. I, you know, these are, anyway. I think Councilmember Banano's question was important and your trouble you guys got, you got three scientists on this panel, so. You you're gonna, you're gonna get it from us and we're all experimentalist types, so. Just want to point that out, so we might need to. Refine the uncertainty in this because it's that uncertainty range. That speaks to what's the probability that the future isn't like the past possibly. Anyway, there's the. Small fluctuations and then there's the overall trend line. So anyway, we might need to revisit this a little more detail down the line. Especially when we revise our general plan. So at this point, Councilmember Kick.
It's actually going to be my question, I was going to ask him, how long is this planning document supposed to cover? How often does it get updated? And when we move on with the general plan, would it be updated at that time? So if staff could answer that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the plan will cover twenty year planning horizon with another five years as optional. That's why you are saying we cover until twenty forty five. And we do this update every five years. So last time was twenty fifteen, the next time will be twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you, it's every five years as an update, but if we are going through our general plan. Before that five years, would that potentially be a sooner update or would we wait until we hit that five year mark?
We will wait until the five years mark. That's required by the state.
And a separate process also required by the state is that we analyze and ask our water wholesaler. Their ability to provide a water supply prior to you being asked as a council to determine whether a change to your general plan is appropriate. So there's two independent processes working, one on the land use sequel side and one on the water supply side, both answering some of the same questions.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So the question I've got and the way to think about this is that this is a prescribed process by the state. And that the pro formas indicate within within that methodology, we're okay. I would imagine that some of our surrounding water districts are not in such good shape. Would be my presumption that not everybody in the Bay Area, for instance, is going to be able to do this calculation. And come out this way or not, can you can you speak to that?
So the method of coming up with water demand. Is pretty. Pretty standard. And especially if one consultant is doing one. Is is is, especially if one consultant is hired by many water district, they are very likely to use the same method. So they will come up with the same number, same range. If they don't use a range, they will have come up with the same average number. So the method will be pretty much the same.
I I'm sure the method will be the same. My question was, is speaks to some of the Vice Mayor Monroe's question and others. Will they come out with the same answer? And the answer is, as we look at this chart. Supply meets demand. I'm suggesting, what I'm asking is, will all water districts, and we know we're not all equal. Will they all come up with the same answer that supply exactly matches demand?
This is Steve Baguio, I'll jump in here. No, other water agencies have different different water sources, so for example, the. The governor declared higher states of emergency for some water agencies based on the current drought conditions. And those are reflective of their water sources, agencies like. So I think it's Sonoma where they have heavier reliance on precipitation and rainfall. So some of those Northern California cities, we did not get the rainfall, so they are in a a different predicament than than we are here in the Tri Valley.
Right, I think Marin's in a world of hurt right now.
Correct.
So I I don't, so anyway, I what I was just trying to put this in perspective. There is a methodology. And what this, and I'm asking for, if I've got the right impression here. The methodology that's applied to this question about whether if the future is like the past on average. And we kind of know what our build out plans are and everything else, things match. And that's the message. It's not that there isn't variance in this thing and we better be extremely careful to conserve. Because just like we do with our financials, we gotta plan for the. You know, save for the non rainy day, right? So. The the point is, I just want to affirm. So the the point is, I just want to affirm, or get affirmed. That using the standard methodology, we come out with a pretty good, on average, match between supply and demand. But that is not to imply that we can take our, you know, stop conserving. Everything we can at the moment, given what we're looking staring at. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then our, our next item up, the water shortage contingency plans will, will address those years where we're not on average. So yes.
Right. And and the point is, this isn't just some kind of turn the crank where everybody gets the same answer. So we are, for our part of the water supply and everything. Close to being okay on these average presumptions, but we know that the, any individual year or set of years can be wildly different than the average. And so therefore, we're going to tee up the next item. So I, I hope those comments are helpful. Are there any other comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Yes. Okay, passes unanimously. Now it's past our normal nine o'clock, ten-minute break time. Let's, before we pick up the next one, it's nine thirteen, let's, let's come back at nine twenty-five. For five dot three. So let's just, we'll be back five twenty, at nine twenty-five. Welcome back, everyone. We've returned from our break. One thing that just occurred to me, in the Zoom world, we're much more prompt. Than if we take a break when we're in the chambers because everybody starts milling around and it's hard to get all the cats back. But I think this works out pretty well now. So, okay, we're now on to five dot three. And I, I wonder, have we already covered it, given our previous conversation, or shall we go ahead here? Anyway, just kidding. Hearing to approve the city's twenty twenty water shortage contingency plan. Can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your city manager, and yes, while some of the discussion did deal with that. You've got lots more fun information to be presented under item five point three. And I'm gonna again introduce water resources, interim Water Resources Division Manager Steve Aguirre. Who's going to introduce the item?
Thank you, Mark. Next, we are presenting the city's twenty twenty water shortage contingency plan. For approval and adoption, water shortage contingency plans have been required as part of the water contingency analysis specified by the California Water Code since the early nineteen eighties of urban water suppliers. The water shortage contingency plan will enable Livermore to water to prioritize mitigation actions when water shortage conditions occur. Such as the drought we are currently experiencing, earthquakes, fires, or other catastrophic catastrophic events that could impact water supply. Dr. Yan Ming Zhang, the city's technical program manager, will present our plan and take any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for coming back. Can everyone see my screen again?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. So this one will be talking about a water shortage conditions plan, which we will be using under a drought condition. So again, all the plan only apply to our municipal service area. It's not covered by, it's not covering on cow water. So this one has the same timeline as the last one. We provide the draft to public on the twenty-eighth last month. And today we're going to adopt this and we'll be sending that out by July first. So the major difference of this version versus the last version, which we did in two thousand eleven. Was there's a major change about the different stages of drought. The last version used four stage of water shortage level. And this stage, we have six stage of water shortage level. So I will show you in the next slide, how how much difference we'll see from here. So as you can see from this table, right now, we have stage one, through stage six. From minimum shortage all the way through critical shortage. As you can see, on the, on the second column, it says, what can trigger a different stage of shortage? It's very simple, which is if we have supply projection that is ten percent below the demand projection while at stage one. If we have between ten percent to nineteen percent below the demand while at stage two. Same thing applied to the other stages. So stage five, if we cannot meet fifty percent demand and sixty stage six, that we have more than fifty percent shortage than we are at stage six. And compared to the, the previous version, as you can see on the most right-hand column. We have twenty percent for stage one for voluntary. And we have twenty percent mandatory for stage two. And then we have up to thirty-five percent to stage three and more than thirty-five percent to stage four. So all you can see in here are the difference between four stages and six stages. And of course, per the new standard, if we are short by ten percent in supply. Then we need to cut ten percent on the demand. Same thing applied all the way to stage six. If we are short for more than fifty percent, then we have to cut more than fifty percent of the demand. So this slide shows under each drought stage, what actions can we take? So first of all, I would like to bring one thing is, for each stage, we will have a drought conservation rates for each stage. For example, at ten percent voluntary, we may have to increase our water rates by ten percent. At stage five, we may have to increase by fifty percent, while still working on the exact percentage. For our next water rate study, but that's a general rule that at each shortage stage. We will apply a higher rate structure for that stage, just to recover some revenue. Lost due to less water we, we sell to the customer. So let's take a look at the stage one. So stage one will have to limit the landscape irrigation to specific times. Then we will also require automatic shuttle hoses. At stage two, we have to further limit the landscape irrigation to specific days. And you can see different measures we take for other stages. One thing I need to bring up is, whatever has been used in the previous stage will remain in fact at the current stage. With that, that equal to say, at stage two, we have to do everything from stage one, plus one thing from stage two. Same thing happens for the, the higher stage. If we have, if unfortunately, we have to move to stage five. Then we have to do everything from stage one through four, then plus three items at stage five. So that are the major changes we are covering on this version of the shortage contingency plan from the last one. Now we are coming to the public comment period. As oven water management plant, I haven't received any comments from the public, but now is a good timing to receive any comments. After receiving the comments, we'll have the same timeframe. We will need to adopt the short agency contingency plan and will send everything to the Department of Water Resources. That concludes my presentation for these topics. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up for a public comment on this item.
Honorable Mayor, we do have speakers. Donna Cabeat, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I had several questions. First of all, what stage do you see us in now? Since we're have the six stages instead of the four? And will all new developments in Livermore require the purple piping? So that they're using treated water on irrigation projects? And do all city, can the city require companies to use the recycled water on their landscaping? And is there some kind of mechanism where we could slow or stop development? If we really go into a critical stage, as some council members have mentioned, this drought is in the second year. We've known droughts to go three, four, or five years in California and beyond. And I would like to know if there are some contingencies that could be added as far as slowing or stopping new projects, if residential projects, if we don't have enough water. Also, the suggested items for one through six, most of us are doing a lot of these already. So they seem very brief and really are lacking in methods to help the public really do more to work on water reduction. I think the public wants to do more, but simple things like when you water or cover on pools. I don't think that this is really a complete enough list. And I'm looking to see what other counties do that are more extensive than the list that has been provided from the the six stages. I know these may be required by the state, but I think there's a lot more that we could do than the minimal suggestions that were on the chart. Thank you.
Okay, would staff care to comment on any of that?
I will jump in and answer some of those. This is Steve Aguirre. So we are currently at a ten percent voluntary reduction. We're not at the official state one where we've had to declare it based on the state's actions. So we're simply asking for a ten percent reduction. As far as the Purple Pipe goes, we currently have Purple Pipe in, here in Livermore, out in the college area, at the golf courses. To extend it to new development, we'd require significant capital improvement projects to, to, to take the Purple Pipe supply lines down there. None of that is currently an approved CIP project that's going through. As far as Livermore's actions in the past drought, when we were at a twenty percent reduction, Livermore residents did an outstanding job. I can't, I can't say that enough. We ended up at, when we asked for twenty to twenty-five, we ended up with a thirty-three and a half percent reduction. Based on these measures, so hopefully, we don't progress in a multi-year drought as we did in the past. But as we went through the, the stages we went through last time and we increased our public outreach campaign. The response from Livermore residents and reducing landscape irrigation and stuff like that. Removing water from restaurants, all those little things added up. And and we did have a significant benefit from, from the efforts of Livermore residents in, in, in conserving and meeting those conservation requirements that we're under. As far as development, the city has been mentioned earlier, we have a general plan, all growth. All city infrastructure, including water supply, is, is taken into account. So approved projects, like you said, will have those, we have the, you know, this plan that meets it, meets it on the average years. And we'll have those periods of drought in California, specifically this region, where we will have to do more on the conservation efforts to, to mitigate those shortages in the, in the, in the dry years. And we're, we're, we end up pumping more groundwater and, and stuff like that. So that's where, there are a few more questions in there. I don't know if I got them all.
Yes, Steve, I can answer the other questions. So right now, within our recycle water service area, we require all the new development to have recycle water for irrigation. So that's a mandatory requirement. And also, your question regarding the demand reduction measures, the, you, you think the list seems pretty short. That's the way we, we try to have that because we know irrigation is the best way to save water. And I would say, half during the last three years average. Sixty percent of the total water is consumed by residential and fifty percent of that is used outdoor. That means a total amount thirty percent comes from residential irrigation. And for the overall irrigation for street medium, that's another twenty percent of the overall irrigation water. So really, irrigation in citywide, that is about fifty percent of the total water. So if we want to do the things most efficiently and with less cost impact. Reducing the amount of irrigation water is the right way to go. And of course, other measures, they do help, for example, to cover the pool, to forbidden car wash or wash very often, or stop washing the hard surface, those will help. But the extent will not be as great as saving irrigation water from, from your landscape. So that's the best way to do. Other agencies, they may have a lot of additional action. But in reality, the way to implement them can be very challenging and they are not as effective as directly saving water from irrigation. That's my hazard.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment?
Yes, sir. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Yes, so the first thing I'd like to do is point out that a lot of discussions of, of public water policy act as if we have a, a normal distribution about a mean, and it's actually not remotely true. It's, it's more of a log normal distribution, which means the average year gets quite a bit more rain than the most probable year. And, and I understand that the professionals do take this into account. But, but it needs to be communicated to the public more in terms of what the implication of that is for, for, for water availability. The second thing I'd like to address is the issue of, of micromanagement of, of conservation. I, you know, we, in our house, do a lot of conservation things and we're, we're below average in terms of water usage. And there's other people who are watering profusely and as, as it was pointed out. Irrigation of landscaping is one of the major things to go. So the idea of having everybody cut back a certain amount is, is just not fair. Many people who have already cut back, really can't cut back anymore without essentially, say, killing their, their their landscaping that they spent money on to make it less drought, more, more drought tolerant. So I, I, I think that you need to rethink the entire approach to how conservation is done. And not punish the people who are already conserving. All these suggestions are good and a lot of them should be done, even if we don't have a drought. But by the same token, if, if, if the policy is to allow growth to get to the point where any dry, two or three years in a row means that people are going to be in trouble with water. It's, it's just not, it's just not the right way to do public planning. That completes my comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll just add in there, you know, our former mayor Marshand was, being the water expert, was I think often pointing out, how can you have growth if you don't have the water? I, I think that's a, a key question. Any other members of the public want to comment?
No, sir. That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. And bring it back to the council for questions, comments, or even a motion.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Yes. Okay, passes unanimously and thanks so much for the reports on the water. And no question, there's going to be a lot of passion around that and that we need to do everything we can to conserve. So now we're on to item six or area six, matters for consideration. And the first one, six dot one is the oral report from our Director of Emergency Services with accompanying slides.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. And let me get my slideshow pulled up here. All right. And let me get my slideshow pulled up here. All right. So it is June 14th. Um, and of course, uh, one of the big items is that tomorrow is June 15th, um where we will go through a fairly major transition away from our blueprint for safer economy um into a much less regulated phase of the emergency. But first, let's start with the numbers, check in on a number of our processes here. So the great news is uh that overall, both in Alameda County and in Livermore, um, the trend line uh is generally heading in the right direction. You can see our number here in Livermore is bouncing around a little bit because the numbers are actually relatively small, um and so they bounce around a little bit. Um, but we don't see any evidence of a long-term surge uh in the numbers. You can see that they are dramatically down uh even from April, um just a couple of months ago, both at the countywide level and the city level. In Livermore, cumulative cases are 4,338 and our seven-day rolling average of new cases per 100,000 uh is just over two, at 2.25. Vaccination data there, you can see Livermore is circled um there. And you see overall um that uh the county of Alameda um has 64% of its red uh but has 64% of its eligible population um fully vaccinated. And we have 58.6% here in Livermore. You can see the trend line for vaccinations, uh and what you can see there is that dip. Uh, that's when the pool of people got bigger. So every time, of course, we allow more people to get vaccinated, um, that was the drop from 16 years of age to 12 years of age. So of course, the population went up, so the percentage of overall folks that were vaccinated dropped at that point. But you can see that we continue to make uh slow and steady progress, both at the county uh level and at the city level overall. You noted on that last slide that our numbers uh continue to be both the average of the county. And so we are working um on a number of ways with our outreach there. So these are just a a list of of the outreach your staff is doing on behalf of the city to make sure that everybody who wants to have a vaccine um understands how they can go about getting a vaccine, including our website, social media, posters and signage, and starting soon, our farmer's market as we continue to staff our summer table um at the city there. One of the items that we'll provide information for is uh vaccine outreach. If people want to know how to get vaccinated. Stanford Healthcare Valley Care has begun their homebound vaccination program. Um, and so that's available to all homebound individuals and it is coordinated directly with the Meals on Wheels and Senior Support Tri-Valley organizations. We're coordinating with the county and Stanford Healthcare um to locate additional mobile points of distribution in Livermore. And we're reaching out to local faith-based organizations um to provide up-to-date information to share with their faith communities, um should any of those folks wish to be vaccinated. Local clinics uh that are ongoing within the city of Livermore are, one of them is is sponsored by the Stanford Healthcare Valley Care. And that's, of course, located at uh 1119 East Stanley Boulevard, where the uh old lifestyles uh uh gym was. And that's an indoor facility, um and they are open on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. Um, and of course, if anybody is under 18, they do need to bring a parent or guardian with them. Access Community Health is partnering with the city of Livermore and providing a vaccine clinic um at the Civic Center Library location. So if 1188 South Livermore Avenue sounded like a familiar address, that is the Civic Center Library. That is an indoor site. It serves both appointments and walk-ins. And through the rest of June, we're uh doing vaccines on Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And uh vaccines at this location are available for anybody 12 and older. Those between the ages of 12 and 17, of course, do need a parent or guardian to accompany them. So as of June 15th, um, the uh Alameda County is aligned with the states. And so the rules are that masks are not required for fully vaccinated individuals, except in settings uh that are very limited, including public transit, indoors for K to 12 schools, childcare, other use settings, healthcare settings, correctional facilities, homeless shelters, cooling centers and emergency shelters. Um, but with those exceptions, otherwise, if you're fully vaccinated, um, no masks uh are required or recommended by the CDC. For unvaccinated individuals, uh masks are required for indoor public settings and businesses. And in workplaces, employers are still subject to the Calooshia and COVID-19 emergency temporary standards. And so uh for us at the, for example, for us at the city of Livermore, um, that means while our customers are not required to be masked in most cases if they're vaccinated, um, our staff still will be um until uh Calooshia updates their uh standards. We do expect that relatively shortly so that Calooshia's guidelines, which right now are a little more restrictive, will come into line with the broader requirements that I just outlined. Quick update on our overall financial assistance. You can read the details there, but the bottom line is almost all of the dollars that you have allocated have been uh fully utilized. Uh, we have just a little bit of money left in the GIFTY program. So if you were thinking of of buying dad that special gift of uh something from anywhere in the community that's a part of that program, go ahead and do that, uh spend that money because immediately the uh business gets those funds. Um, you can, uh, the uh the gift certificates don't expire. Um, so even if it's not for Father's Day, if there's some other reason that you just uh can't wait to get out and uh participate in uh buying something from one of our local retailers, that would be a great way to do it. And you get a bonus um for $40, you get a $15 bonus. For $75, you get a $25 bonus. Um, in that program, uh 84%, as you can see, of those gift certificates have been expended. So we've got just a little bit left. So if that one's on your list of things to do, we'd encourage you to do that soon. And of course, uh, our emergency orders and and outdoor dining and and retail flex zones um continue to update as the circumstances changes. You'll notice throughout the community, most, almost all of the tents that were put up to make it through the cold weather have now been removed. Of course, they've reached the end of their lifespan. We're only allowed to have tents like that up uh six months. And in fact, in rest of the cases, the tents really aren't creating uh much of a nice environment uh inside there. Uh, but umbrellas are permitted and encouraged and you've seen them spring up throughout the community. So downtown and the rest of the community where people are doing outdoor restaurant activities uh is looking uh great. And we do expect to continue um our outdoor dining that into the expanded areas through the rest of this year. So whether that's on private property, where we would traditionally require that to be a parking area or in uh on the public street, um, we're gonna uh uh have the uh June 15th, we will have the uh requirements relaxed, um allowing essentially no more social distancing for the interior activities in those facilities. We'll check back in with the various restaurateurs uh to make sure that they still need all of those areas uh outdoors. And if they don't, to to shrink those outdoor areas a little bit. We're looking to balance essentially between the various retail activities, which are uh our retailers very much are looking to recover this summer, as well as our restaurant uh owners who are working uh to make sure that they're uh very successful this summer and help with the uh rest of the recovery here. We had questions uh at our last update about uh Project Room Key uh in Alameda County. Um, and you see a a quick summary there of the number of individuals served and the number of Livermore uh in uh residents served. So you can see that out of the 233 folks uh served uh as of earlier this month, uh 80 of them were for uh from originally from Livermore. Um, we currently have 125 individuals uh that are part of 91 households that are currently being um served at the Residence Inn by Marriott. Um, the number of uh, you see the number of Livermore residents there currently at the hotel, the total exited, total exited to housing. We want to be clear that of all of the individuals um who have exited Project Room Key have been offered a housing voucher and that uh uh many of them, you see the the Livermore here, Livermore total, um have actually been placed in permanent housing as a part of that program. Of course, uh, June 15th is tomorrow. The state of California will be moving out of the Blueprint for Safer Economy restrictions. That means overall, um for most businesses, it means things like occupancy restrictions or distancing requirements now no longer apply. In the case of city offices, it means that our offices will be reopening to the public. Of course, uh, city business has been carried on continuously throughout the pandemic. But most recently, um, we were under either limited hours or appointments required for certain facilities. And all of those restrictions uh now will go away. As of tomorrow, we're returning to our normal hours with just a couple of minor uh exceptions to that. One is our libraries uh will not be open on Sunday. Um, as we continue to make the transitions, we still are a little bit staff-heavy in some of the areas. And so at the current time, we are not open on Sundays. Later this summer, we however will reopen uh libraries seven days a week. But all of the rest of the hours uh at our Civic Center uh Library, our Rincon Branch and our Springtown Branches um will be open. Check our website for details on that. City Hall will be open our normal eight to five, five days a week, um as well uh as the rest of our facilities um at the Police Department, at uh Water Resources, at Maintenance, at the Airport. And each of those, of course, have their own hours um and their own requirements. Um, but generally, we're opening all of those back up to the public. And uh with that, I'm available for any questions.
Before we uh go to any questions, is any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Yes, sir. Jackie Cota, please unmute yourself.
Recently, thousands of pages of felonious Fauci's emails were released proving he lied about the pandemic and panicked over his gain-of-function research being exposed. Not only did Fauci say privately masks don't work and there's no asymptomatic spread, he also knew the virus that he funded was likely genetically engineered while he was publicly pushing the false na- natural origin theory. Fauci sent his deputy director at the NEID the gain-of-function research paper on the coronavirus by Dr. Shi Zhengli in Wuhan and UNC's Ralph S. Barak, but denied its existence under congressional oath. In addition, an email from the government-funded scientist Christian Anderson told Fauci some of the features potentially look engineered on January 31st, 2020. At best, it proves that this is not only a conspiracy theory to talk about the engineering of the virus, masks are dangerous to our health, and the NIH-funded scientists were talking about these facts privately. Fauci demonized proven therapeutics so he could rush in his experimental injections. It's a massive cover-up of crimes against humanity, the likes of which the world has never seen. But this is not new to council because I've been telling you this for over a year. You chose to do zero research on your own or push back on the county health officers and ask for proof of their claims at the expense of Livermore citizens and businesses. Not only that, you implemented punitive damages to citizens for not suffocating themselves at your order. And when I objected, the former mayor insulted and bullied me. The city is doing exactly what the corrupt dictator of California wants, this New World Order agenda and evil fear-based propaganda. We have listened to bureaucrats profess to be following the science. However, when pressed for the proof of the science, they were touting they provided nothing but name-calling and demonization to those that questioned the unsubstantiated claims. In both of my conversations with Alameda County health officers last year, I told them both the Alameda dashboard was a lie, gave them specific examples of fraud, but they also chose to do nothing about it. Recently, Alameda County was forced to reduce their death numbers by 25% due to fraud. It's interesting, Mark Roberts chose not to report this. Once again, I'm reminding you that you swore an oath to uphold the Constitution for which our forefathers agreed that government was a necessary evil, which is why they place restrictions on government, including our Bill of Rights, which states specifically our liberties were given to us by God, not government. We respectfully request you remove your dangerous mass signs fines from our downtown area. Stop pushing the experimental injections because you, the medical tyrants, and all the representatives pushing these conspiracies have lost all credibility. There is no emergency and the next time evil rushes in their effort to destroy America with fear-based propaganda, variants and boosters with zero science to back up their claims, you may want to do some research and consider upholding our rights first instead of crushing them without question.
Have any other members of the public who wish to speak to this item?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on six dot one. Bring it back to the uh council. I see uh Councilmember Kik has her hands up.
Yeah, um, I have a question about the Project Room Key. So all um residents were offered a housing voucher. Can you give us a little bit detail about what that what that process looks like when they get a housing voucher? Where are they offered to go? And um did we do any sort of exit interview to understand why um certain residents chose not to take the the voucher?
So a housing voucher is is not a secured place to live. It is a a document that allows folks to rent um at a market uh uh rate apartment project that accepts the voucher and there are some. So there is a limited supply of uh housing within the city of Livermore. So that is certainly one reason um why some of the folks, even though they have a voucher, are not able to find housing here locally or in the Tri-Valley. There's obviously a a variety of reasons uh that people choose not to move forward with that. But I do want to be clear, in addition, in certain circumstances, um, you know, people who are exiting do get additional help and uh with recommendations about where we have openings of affordable housing within affordable housing projects. Um, and through the combination of that, you saw through the housing voucher um and openings in our affordable housing projects, um you saw the numbers uh there for the Livermore residents. We don't have numbers on all of the ones spread throughout the county. But part of the potential is that in some cases, there's just not enough supply.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I've got um one, just want to put things in perspective. Uh, I know when it, the uh, we first started going into lockdown and we heard about the virus, uh, you know, it was fairly possible that it would be deadly. But I I just a rough calculation, I think we've got 70-some people who actually died in Livermore as a result of the virus. Is that the right number?
You're in the, you're in the right area. Uh, we don't have detailed numbers by jurisdiction. Um, but uh that would be an extrapolation from the overall numbers countywide to our jurisdiction's population. That's correct.
Okay, and then we've got about 4,000 cumulative cases. So that's of the people who contracted the virus, about one and a half percent actually died. Is that kind of a way to think about this?
That's correct.
And that the the 4,000 uh who were as cumulative cases, that kind of gets us to 5% of our population actually contracted it.
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I understood that. And I I want to say my impression is um that the steps that were taken were very uh helpful in limiting this. Other parts of the world, it's been much, much worse. So I want to thank everybody for cooperating and staying safe. The other thing I wanted to ask, uh, do you have any information about the Delta variant? And uh I saw something just recently that is expected to be the the dominant uh strain in the future. Any, do you have any information on that or care to comment?
No, I've read the uh the same uh information that you have, Honorable Mayor, on that. We don't have any specific information um on its prevalence here in Alameda County, for example. But you're right, that that particular strain does appear to be the one that's uh that's going to be our dominant strain, at least is projected to be.
Uh, do we have um plans to continue posting the uh data that we have on the website? Is it still going to be available from the county or what's the future like, look like for being able to track what's going on?
At this point, while the county is dialing back some of the information they put out on a weekly basis, my understanding is that they continue, will continue to update the uh website with the basic information that was displayed as part of your slideshow this evening. So we do expect that information to be available at the county.
Okay, so we did, what we have on our website, we can continue to update uh once a week. Is that the?
Yes. That's correct.
But that would, that would be helpful because uh, you know, we, even though the numbers are low and everything else, uh, I think everybody would benefit from being able to track the the trends. So thank you for that. And uh, I want to thank staff for the um getting that assistance program out and it looks like it went very well. Have you gotten any um uh feedback in general on the program from the community?
The information we have received back has been very positive um uh on a number of the various programs. For the Rental Assistance Program, um, of course, that helped both tenants and landlords um by reducing the amount of unpaid uh rent on that. Um, on the GIFTY program in particular, uh, got, you know, we've gotten some rave reviews from people who bought the gift cards, as well as businesses that immediately got those dollars um credited to their accounts. And 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 the bulk of this happened essentially, you'll remember. You know, prior to some of the bigger federal and state programs kicking in. So I think it was not only the variety of programs that the council directed happen. It was the timing that helped some of the businesses make it across the the times when. They still had an impact, but we didn't have the federal and state programs in place yet.
Okay, well, thank you and really appreciate what you and staff have done over this last period of time. And I'm glad we're we're beginning to reopen. Anybody else want to comment? Okay, I think then I'll close out this item. And we're on to six dot two. Which is appointment of council members to the city council subcommittee on advisory bodies. For the period of July one to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And I want to begin by saying, I want to thank council member Carling for his completed term. And I think with the various transitions that we've gone through, I think you you ended up spending a little extra time. And is that correct?
I don't think so, but.
You don't think so? Okay, but anyway. Do appreciate what you've done there. I in the past always enjoyed being on it. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity. So going forward. I'm going to appoint Vice Mayor Monroe to continuing to serve. And council member Kick is the new appointment. And what we do for those in the watching is we always rotate out one person. And then the other person has done it before, so we always have a sense of continuity. And we rotate through the members of the city council every six months. So I think I'll close out six dot two. Is that an item that anybody in the public wants to comment on? I guess they need to be. First, first of all, open the public comment on that. And is there anybody who wishes to comment?
Mayor, no comment has been received.
Yeah, I'll close that. And I see council member Kick has her hand up.
Just so excited, that's all. I've been waiting for my turn, so.
Great. It's it's a lot of fun and it's. It's very valuable. I mean, the number of people. That actually want to contribute to helping the city be better is is pretty astounding and.
I've sent a lot of people to apply, but I haven't actually ever got to interview them, so it's exciting to see it all the way through. Thank you.
And I and I think one of the things is we, you know, occasionally we get more people applying for a spot than we have openings. And we've also found that many of those people have a, you know, a whole variety of talents and interests. And often they they welcome the opportunity for another. Appointment that they may not have thought about. So just want to let people know, please apply. And well, there will be a spot eventually. So thank you and thank you too for willing to serve. So we're on now to. Seven, the council committee reports and matters initiated by the city manager, city attorney, staff and council members. Now, there isn't public comment on this one. And I'm going to change up the order tonight and go first. And first of all, I want to cover one business. Is that I've completed my chairmanship of the bus company. Group. And at this point, I'm going to become a bow out of the regular service on the bus company board. And switch places with council member Banano, who will be the regular appointee and I'll be the backup alternate. I want to get that out there and then this city clerk can send laugh to the requisite letter notifying them of that. So I take it that's okay with you, council member Banano?
Very much. I'm looking forward to it.
And I should also say that you've been paying attention to the meetings or and are ready to step in. And but very much the same way that you and council member Carling stepped in on the water related matters. So I just want to assure everybody, we're getting a variety of experiences on the council and. Everything's in in good hands. So the next thing I want to do. It's with it's going to be a matters initiated, but I ask you to bear with me. Because in the process of that, I'm going to go through a set of questions and answers with the staff. And I'll just say, I'm disheartened by the fact that I have to do this. But we do have some rather bizarre claims out there that I think. Need to be addressed because I'll say this. The number one job of the city government is public safety. And we take that very seriously. That's where our budget is spent. And there should be no doubt that this council is a very good steward of public safety. So that's the intro to a set of questions that I want to ask staff. Regarding the letter that the San Francisco Bay Area Regional Water Quality Board sent to us. And I think, as I say, it's unfortunate, bear with me, this record needs to be set straight. So for staff. I'd like to, who? I will ask about that letter. Who will be responding to me?
Honorable mayor, this is Mark Robish, city manager and Bob Vin, your city engineer would be prepared to answer questions related to that letter.
Okay, it's appropriate that the city engineer answer this. So first question. How many recent letters? I E. In twenty twenty one, has the city received from the San Francisco Bay Area? Bay Regional Water Quality Board?
Honorable mayor, this is Bob Vin, your city engineer. And the answer to that question is one.
Okay, what was the date of that letter?
The letter in reference to stated February ninth, twenty twenty one.
What was the subject to that letter?
The subject line was approval of site assessment and summary report.
Could you please read the first line of that letter?
Sure. And I'm quoting, this letter approves the April eighteen, twenty twenty site assessment and summary report. Parenthesis site assessment and May twenty second, twenty twenty site history technical report. Parentheses, report submitted by the city of Livermore, parentheses, city. In response to the regional water boards, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty directive letter.
So a mouthful of words. What was the bottom line purpose of the letter?
Well, the the purpose of the letter was for the water board to communicate their concurrence. With the city reports conclusions. And request additional evaluation to assess any impacts from the properties use. Former uses a lumberyard. And also to notify the city that a site management plan would have to be reviewed and approved by the water board. Prior to construction and redevelopment of the site.
Next question, what was requested by the water board as the next steps?
The water board requested two things, a data gap assessment work plan. And an interim remedial action plan.
What was the basis for the request?
Well, the information required in the requested reports is needed by the water board to further understand the extent. Of site contamination and identify remedial options that can reduce or eliminate future impacts.
So following on that, my next question is, is there anything unusual in this letter? That would set it apart from all similar letters that are part of the process for remediating possible site contamination?
No, this is a typical letter.
Okay, following on, it's my understanding. That the way the process works is to start with the history of all activities on the site. And then test for the logical possible contaminants from those activities. What are those historical activities that we are all aware of at this moment?
Well, the the site was used as a rail depot, a lumberyard. There was dry cleaning on the site and general commercial uses.
Okay, are there any activities that anyone knows of? That are uncommon and have not been remediated numerous times before in other projects in the Bay Area or California?
No.
Then one more. Have we had any communications recent or otherwise with the water board? That would lead us to believe that there are unusual contaminants that would not be possible to adequately mitigate?
No, in fact, our conversations with the water board have indicated the cleanup of the site will be routine in nature. The next steps, as we mentioned, was to finalize a mutual understanding of possible contaminants. And to draw up a detailed remediation plan. The plan could have several different strategies. One example and could include a soil vapor extraction system, which are very effective at filtering out harmful chemicals.
So that means that if there were vapors, that they go through this system. And that what's the output does not have the contaminants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right now, we.
Not have any contaminants.
Okay, now, a little thing, I just want to make sure if I think I heard right, I heard in public comment, something about lead vapor. What is that?
Lead vapor, I'm not sure. There are usually the vapor has to do with hydrocarbons. Lead is usually found in the upper layers of the soil and the typical remediation. For lead is to dig the soil out and haul it away to a class two or class one disposal site.
So I would just suggest that. The people who wish to comment, comment accurately. And lead vapor, and I'm not familiar with lead being having much of a vapor pressure. So the. Number, next question, has city staff informed the council about the communications from the water board? And were those communications part of the council's deliberation about the Eden proposal?
Yes, on the Eden Housing Staff Report. That was reported on May twenty fifth at the council meeting. We reported and I quote. Subsurface contaminant impacts were a known condition that was previously studied in the two thousand nine subsequent. Environmental Impact Report. No new information or circumstances have surfaced identified related to contaminant impacts at the site. The city has been working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board to address existing conditions following the water board's typical process. For developing development of impacted sites. And the Eden project does not present any unusual circumstances. Although the site is subject to ongoing cleanup activities, that cleanup is not unusual, given the past property use. As a lumberyard and train depot and its location in the downtown area with surrounding commercial uses. That have included dry cleaners. Discussions with the water board suggested the contaminant impacts are not alarming. And the planned response being developed in coordination with the water board is expected to be routine for such a site. Similar to what has been implemented for nearby sites, sites such as the Lego Legacy Site right across the street.
Well, thank you. And finally, again, I can't believe I have to ask this question. Is there any basis for believing there is radioactive material on the site?
No.
Thank you. I think it. It's okay, before I do matter, that I had matters initiated. And before I go there. I see Vice Mayor Monroe has her hand up. And and under the Brown Act, only one of us other than myself can comment, so just to let others know that. So Vice Mayor Monroe. You're on mute.
Of course I'm on mute.
Yes.
I I just, I wanted to jump in here. Just I I've listened to the comments here and would you mind if I added a few words of my own here?
Oh, not at all.
All right, well, so this, we we've heard, we heard comments tonight from people in public comment. Pointing out some of what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say it anyway, because I think it's just ridiculous. May twenty fourth, we heard hours of public comment on the Eden Housing Development, hours. We split the meeting in half. And that evening, the question of site contamination was asked. On May twenty fifth, the same thing that we've just heard our city engineer give. Get that city staff gave a thorough answer, completely debunked the idea. And yet we see this ad. So tonight we have another response to this absurd attack ad. And we've heard it refuted again. And this idea that this ad had featured a nuclear waste symbol at Livermore, which has two nuclear labs. And people who, you know, actually know what nuclear material is. Please. The point that this ad was produced by the exact same people who first wanted a hotel, then wanted a community park. And now say that this place is contaminated, they want, they want us to believe. That the contamination is fine for a park, but not for housing. So they want our children to go play on this allegedly contaminated soil? You know, as pieces of propaganda go, and I I think that. Alan Burnham's comment about this being a standard propaganda act, but it's right up there with Jewish space lasers. And I haven't seen any of them around lately, although I'm waiting. At one level, you know, this is really ridiculous and I'd love to just ignore it. But the problem is, is that this damage cannot be ignored because it damages the whole community. It's nonsense that wastes everyone's time, it wastes our energy and it wastes money and it's a non issue. And it distracts us from working on the real problems and solutions that we could be working on. We have now asked city staff to spend time several times debunking a non issue. How many times do we have to do this? But it's even worse than that. It is a poison that's damaging the fabric of our community. You know, if we, we just became an all America city because we know how to collaborate. When we want to. Those of us who want to collaborate do just fine with it. So we deserve better. Our city staff deserves better. Our community deserves deserves better. All of us deserve better. You know. City staff and city council have given the facts repeatedly, but as sure as the. But but as the sure we want a park where there's toxic waste folk have shown. Facts have no impact on those who do not want to hear on this or any other issue. I don't expect those folk to change and that really saddens and disappoints me. I there are people that I have lost great respect for. But I do hope that the vast majority of Livermore residents will recognize poison when they see it and steer clear. Back over to you.
Yeah, well, thank you. With that, the matters that I want to initiate and looking for head nods is this. I request that staff ensure that all communications related to the remediation of the site between the water board. The city and its consultants are readily available on the city's website. So that all citizens can see for themselves what the actual situation is regarding the possible contaminants and remediation plans. Can I get concurrence with that? Thank you. So is that staff, are you okay with that?
Yes, from my view there, it appeared all five council members concurred with that direction and will post documents on the website.
Okay, then I'll just finish off. Well, thank you. I'll finish off, you know, we on the. You know, committee report outs, I just want to mention that the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Meeting, it was a, you know, review of the Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. I think that's something that I would encourage everybody to kind of look up and read and understand. It's very valuable. And I want to give a. And I want to give a shout out to the rodeo parade. I like that thing about is the world's fastest parade, not just rodeo. And I thought the, I think it was Asbury Park Methodist with the grills was was really fantastic. That was, that was a good way to end it. And and Councilor Bonanno and I were just at the groundbreaking for the Quest Science Center's use of their site this summer. And I'll let Councilor Bonanno say more about that. So that concludes it for me. Now on to Councilmember Kick.
It's been a busy time, so I went to the grand opening of the new visitor center at Del Val, which is super amazing. You should go check it out, especially if you have little ones that you can bring. There are a ton of activities and all of the exhibits are about water and the importance of water and how Del Val serves our community. So it was, it was really cool. I brought the council kids, Cora and Max, to come test it out. They give it the seal of approval. And it was valuable. There, there's a game where one kid tries to flood the city and the other kid tries to protect the city by releasing water from the dam. So that that was, that was good. I also participated in filming a video about Altamont Wind project for EBCE and as a representative of the city. And that was great. We, I stopped by the Pedrosi Foundation. What is it called when they give you money to go to college? Scholarship Foundation? And and saw some of those students and that was great. We had the Memorial Day event. Regular meetings. Valley Link was awarded twenty million dollars, which was super fantastic. So thanks, Walwal, for getting that for us. And then just in general, my kids and I have been going back to community events. So we went to Cuentos de Canciones at the Livermore Library. They're back. We did a chalk art program this morning decorating in front of the library, which is really nice to see those community events that used to be just a part of my weekly life. Just back to normal and and all of the families participating and lots of the families I talked to are so happy to be back. So thank you so much to the library staff for for your work of getting right back to it. And additionally, the summer reading program has been really going really great with my kids. And this year it's on an app. So there's like direct feedback. My kids will read their books and they scan the book that they read and it tracks all the books that they read and they can get awards and it's been a great way to encourage that nightly reading. So thank you again to library staff. Nathan, please pass that on. That we're really enjoying and appreciating that. And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Thanks. I just wanted to focus on tomorrow evening is the last formal meeting with the E and I team. It's a closeout and it'll be the end of the formal part of the program. We'll be bringing back to council in July, some of the recommendations and discussions we'll have with our colleagues. But I think Vice Mayor and I have learned a lot. And it's it'll be interesting to see how we close it out tomorrow evening. It'll be, I think it'll be very worthwhile to hear some of the closing comments tomorrow. I'd also like to point out that there's another workday for Goodness Village on Saturday. Sort of putting the finishing touches on the tiny homes as people are getting prepared to move in. So if you have time, you can go to the Goodness Village website, sign up. They expect it to be warm this weekend. So if you plan on attending, let them know, take plenty of water to keep hydrated and and help put the finishing touches on the tiny homes out there at Goodness Village. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. And and thank you for stepping in behind me on the E and I. Because that that's a lot of work and appreciate what you and Council Vice Mayor Monroe have done there.
Yes, glad to help.
Yeah, Councilmember.
Yeah, just a couple of real quick things. I also attended the Pedrosi Scholarship Foundation event. I'm a former board member of the foundation, also one of the founders of the Young Scholar Program, which is also has become part of the scholarship award ceremony. We bring our young scholars there to see what it's like to get all the way through high school and be moving on to college and and I'm always happy to be attending those events. They've they've done a wonderful job during the pandemic and really, really proud of that organization and proud to have been part of it for so long. I'll just mention briefly what you already mentioned was the Quest Plaza. This is the the first groundbreaking on the Quest Science Center site. I've been helping that group kind of plan and and get going on an outdoor science pavilion. It'll be an outdoor facility where we'll host science events, educational events, it'll be kind of an outdoor classroom for for Quest Plans events, but also just a gathering place for the community. It'll have a shaped structure, a nice set of benches, some interactive displays and and there'll be events planned. People will be able to attend from all over the community. And I think it's going to be a really nice way to start showing what what that downtown area is going to become. I'm very much looking forward to to seeing that. We hope to be up and running with that within the next month or so. Planning events there. So keep your eye out for that, right next to the statue, where the Quest Science Center building will eventually be. And I just wanted to end with just sort of reiterating some of what we heard. I think it was Don Argula, the CEO of of the Chamber, who just commented on the list of things we heard about tonight, which I think really state better than anything, anything you read in the paper these days about our community. You know, we're celebrating pride, we're celebrating Juneteenth, we're learning about you know, the diversity of our community. We're appreciating the diversity of our community and embracing everyone. And, you know, we're talking about caring for our seniors. We're talking about giving art awards to our graduating seniors. We've become an all American city. I mean, I just, I could be prouder of the city and prouder to be on this on this council. And I think it's just, it's so many good things are happening. And I'm sorry, we occasionally have to spend time on things that distract us from that. And such good work being done by our staff. And I think I'll just end it there.
Yeah, well, thank you. And now Vice Mayor Monroe.
All right. Well, I really appreciate coming after the list of really good things. I the last couple of weeks for me have been combination of E and I and LOCC. And since Councilmember Carling has talked about the equity and inclusion, I'll talk a little bit about League of California Cities. And in particular, I sit on the, let's see, Transportation Communications and Public Works Legislative Committee. And there's just a couple of items I wanted to point out because they they affect transportation locally. There's some other things in terms of broadband, in terms of money coming in different ways. But in particular, there are two bills that the Legislative Committee chose to support. One was AB one twenty two, which gives a little bit more local control to cities for setting speed limits. And making them a little bit slower than has been the regulation going forward. So this is a bill that allows it to that enables cities to look at where their streets where they, what the, what speed they think their streets should be, rather than having a one size fits all approach. So that's one. And then the other, there's quite a bit of debate about this. But ultimately, it passed quite substantially. And that's AB forty three, and that is about the Idaho stop for bikes. And now you might have heard about the California stop for cars. The Idaho stop for bikes is a parallel kind of thing. With the with the distinction that when you ride a bike, you're not surrounded by metal. And you have four wheels, which is somewhat more stable. So for a bike to stop at a four wheel, a four way stop and then start again, that start is dangerous because you have a little wobble. The Idaho stop, if there's no other traffic around, slow down and slide through, apparently is safer. We had quite a bit of debate with a number of people saying, I don't believe it, even if the data says so. Ultimately, ultimately, the data won and we ended up supporting, supporting the bill. But but look for that. You know, coming, coming to a city near you. So that was one thing I wanted to point out. And then the other is I too am very excited about the all America city. But I'm even more excited about something else, which is that ten of the ten cities that won, one of them was Evanston, where I grew up. Now, that's, that's interesting in and of itself. But what you don't know is that our mayor was born in Evanston. And so what you have here on council are the mayor and the vice mayor, both of whom share Evanston and Livermore. But I want to leave you with this question, which is, which one of it owns it more? He left. He was born there, but he left when he was less than a year old. I did not arrive until I was seven. I think I win. It's up to you to make the decision.
It depends if you're from Europe and like monarchies, there's always the birthright, you know. So anyway, well, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Oh, come on, that was the mic drop.
All right, we're now adjourned to a regular city council meeting on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. To be held virtually using Zoom. So good night all. Thank you.